Good evening, everyone. My name is Ricardo Ganjam and I'm the Secretary of the DC Public Charter School Board. My colleagues and I are here this evening to listen to you. Here with me this evening are Leah Cruisi and Naomi Shelton and Dan Soifer and Steve Bumbau are joining us by phone. Dan and Steve, can you hear us?
This is Anthony, I can hear you, Ricardo.
Super.
Yep.
Great. Rick Cruz will also be joining by phone later this evening for part of the meeting. Those board members who can't be here tonight or can't attend the entire hearing will view the complete video of the hearing and review all materials before our final vote. On December 17, 2018, this board voted to initiate charter revocation proceedings for National Collegiate Preparatory Public Charter High School, which I'll call National Collegiate Prep. Tonight, we're holding this public hearing at the request of National Collegiate Prep to provide the school and stakeholders the opportunity to voice their opinions about the school's performance and DCPCSB's staff recommendation to revoke the charter. We are not voting on the charter revocation tonight. On January 22, my colleagues and I will vote on whether to continue the school's charter or revoke the charter and close the school at the end of the school year. A court reporter is here to document this hearing. It's also being streamed live and a recording will be available on DCPCSB's website. To ensure we make the most of our time this evening, we've allotted no more than 30 minutes for National Collegiate Prep and its representatives to make a presentation and respond to DCPCSB's staff recommendation. This will be followed by an hour of public testimony. Then, staff from DCPCSB will have 30 minutes to present staff's proposal to the board. We will conclude the hearing with 30 minutes for the board to ask questions of both the school and the DCPCSB staff. Because of time, we'll only be able to hear testimony from witnesses who signed up to testify in advance, and each individual will have two minutes to speak. If I do not call your name, I encourage you to email or hand-deliver your testimony to DCPCSB. The record will remain open until 6:00 PM on this coming Friday, January 18, for public testimony and any additional information board members may request. Do we have any public officials here this evening? Now, we will hear from Nikhil Vashi, Specialist on DCPCSB's School Quality and Accountability Team.
I'm Nikhil Vashi, and I will give a brief overview of the board process before the school and the public present their comments. Next slide, please. Oh, next slide again. The Charter Board is comprised of volunteers appointed by the mayor. The board provides oversight and support to charter schools in the District of Columbia. Every five years, the board must decide whether a school has met its goals. Next slide. Next slide. National Collegiate is a nonprofit which was granted a charter by the board to open a school in 2009. As a charter school, the school has freedom about how the school runs. In exchange for that freedom, the school agreed to meet certain goals. Next slide. Each charter school agrees to meet a set of goals and agrees that if the school fails to meet one of these goals, the board may revoke its charter. Next slide. Board staff found that the school has not met all of its goals. As Ricardo stated, we are here to listen, and a final vote is scheduled for January 22 in our offices. Next slide. Next slide. And now, we will hear from the school community and the public. A court reporter is here to capture your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now hear from National Collegiate Prep Leadership.
Good evening. Stephen Marcus, Counsel for the School. Thank you for coming to NCP. We'd like to begin with the public testimony from the families, the parents, first, and after they provide their testimony, we'll then have the school leadership make its submissions.
Okay, we'll just make a little switcheroo in the program. No problem. Okay, so we'll now begin to hear from the witnesses I have on my list. The witnesses are grouped by parents, current students, alumni, teachers and staff, and different stakeholders. So I'll begin with the parents, the first, and I'll call five at a time. And as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, each public witness will have two minutes to speak. A bell will ring when you have 30 seconds left, and a second bell will ring when your time is up. It's important that you honor the two minutes to ensure we have time to hear from everyone who has signed up to speak tonight. Again, if I do not call your name, I encourage you to email or hand-deliver your testimony to DCPCSB by 6:00 PM this Friday. I will now call the first five names. Please line up at the microphone. Michael Bullware, Crystal Goodman, Darnachisa Monroe, Julia Tutte, and Beverly West. Do we have Michael Bullware, Crystal Goodman, Darnachisa Monroe, Julia Tutte, and Beverly West? Okay. I'm...
My name is Donisha.
Don, pardon me, Donisha. Okay, well, it looks like we don't have some of the others just yet, so let me continue a few more names. Beverly West, Roberta Wiles, Ann Wilson, Doug Wilson, Camilla Wheeler, and Alexa Pinkney. Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started? Ms. Monroe?
Good evening. I believe that NCP needs to stay open due to the children in the neighborhood. This is a very good school. My son came last year, and he will be graduating this year. I can honestly say that the teachers and the students have really overcome and we're very active with the children in Ward Eight. And this is the only public charter school, high school, on this end. These children in Ward Eight, they need our help and support. And by us not getting the help and support, the school bring a lot of activities to the children to help them out, and that's what we need in Ward Eight. You see all the killings and everything on TV. We need to keep our children occupied. And while this high school is here and we're dealing with high school teenage kids to go on to the next step, this school really needs to be open. And they have processed with me a lot with my child. And I have a young man, he's going, getting him in college. And they have been helping me with the applications and everything. His grades have improved, attitude changed, you know, when they're teenagers, their hormones jump and they like. But this is a very great school. He begged me to come to this school, and I did my research. Some of the Charter Board members know me very well from when my children attended Friendship Collegiate Academy, and that was a mess. I never had to call the Charter Board on this school at all. But I want to say, I hope your decision is clear with yourself and with God, and that these kids can grow with this school on this end of Ward Eight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you could please state your name before you speak?
I'm Roberta Wiles. My son is a 12th grade IB student here at National Collegiate Prep. Let me first start out by saying why I chose NCP for a place for my son to go to school. The student-to-teacher ratio and college preparation was very important to me. It is important for National Collegiate Prep to remain in Ward Eight because they are the only IB school east of the river. The faculty and staff are compassionate about the students here at NCP. They want to see these children succeed and become educated and well-rounded young men and women. I've never seen a staff like the staff I see here at NCP. They encourage their students to be who they can be, bringing out the best in them. NCP has so much to offer, and closing NCP would be devastating to the children that go here, went here, and to the parents. My son used to stay to himself, shy and very quiet. Here at NCP, they changed that for him. He has come out of his shell and has flourished with each day that he has been here at NCP. My son enjoys going to NCP. He likes the faculty and staff and says they are always willing to help. My son is who he is today because of NCP, what they have instilled in him. He has so many opportunities here that he would not get anywhere else. I want more for my son, and NCP has given me that satisfaction. I am a parent that is very involved in her son's education, and his success in this harsh world that we live in today is my main priority. NCP knows the struggles that these young adults face every day, and they are a very supportive group for that. I am very grateful. Anytime I have reached out to a teacher, administrator, or the founder, I have always received a response back the same day. They are always available to talk to you on any given day. When I have come up to the school, they are always friendly, and they know me by name as well as my child's name. You would not get this at any other school. Why should we take away from these young adults their right for a good, solid education? Why would you want to close a school in southeast DC that has made a difference in so many children's lives and will continue to make an impact? Although my son is a senior this year, I know the staff and the teachers will be there for him even after he has graduated because he has gained lifelong mentors. NCP and the staff are giving these children the tools they need to grow and ensure that they do not become another statistic and are able to start a new legacy for their family and generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
My name is Alexa Pinkney, and my daughter's a ninth grader. Go here, she just started. From the first time I entered this school, they were nice. Letting this school go is detrimental to these kids here. For me, it's closer for my child to even walk to the school. Because if she goes to another school, that means she has to catch the bus, and I'm afraid for my daughter as a parent because of what's going on out here in this school. As far as the staff is concerned, I could come to them and ask them anything, and they would come to me and give me the answer, or even try to help me figure out, or we could discuss it. And I have done that with numerous of staff here, just for this point of just being a ninth, my child being a ninth grader. For her, her biggest issue was math. They got a lot of activities here for the kids, especially as far as helping them with different, for the resources for them. And I think that's the best thing for them, is for y'all to keep this school open. There's a lot of us parents out here that really think this school is good for these kids. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you get started, just wanted to let you know that there's another mic here, so if you want to go ahead and be queued up to save time.
Good evening. My name is Camilla Wheeler. I have a ninth grader and a senior IB program participant here. This was our first year here because I was before the Charter Board last school year because WMST was closed. A really good school, however financially, they weren't set. Understandable. Now, this year, I'm being told that academically, we're being looked at. So if you close NCP, academically, where are our students going to go? Who is meeting the expectations, not exceeding them? Who is meeting the expectations on this side of the river? This is what we need to think about, not just closing a school. Let's back up. From 2012 to 2017, there were 26 charter schools or campuses or programs closed. Eighteen of those schools were closed because of academic deficiencies as a public charter board. When do you help? Why are we taking the easy way out to just close a school? Yet, you are opening schools here, there, and everywhere. Is it easier to just open a school than to fix what we already have? This is January 16, 2019. We have 14 murders already in this city because you all are not taking the responsibility that you have to educate our babies. The parents can't do it at home alone. These educators are doing it. At what point do you all remember why you have the job that you have? Without these schools, you don't have a job. Without these schools, you don't have a job. Without these students, you don't have a job. Stop looking at this as a business, and you just keep closing things. Fix the problem from the beginning. Academically, you know why there's a problem in high school? Because it's in middle school. It wasn't fixed from elementary school. Why don't you back up? Fix our babies from the beginning. And then by the time they get to high school, we wouldn't even have these issues. Have a great evening.
My name is Ann Wilson. I was looking for a charter high school conveniently located not far from my home because I wanted a better choice than my boundary high school, which was Baloo. I found that at National Collegiate Prep. I was also looking for a smaller high school for one of my children who felt smaller high school, a smaller high school with smaller class sizes would suit them better. I found that at NCP. Because I like to familiarize myself with staff and have access to administrators at my schools, my children's schools, it was easier to do at NCP because of the school's size. I've watched NCP grow and become more competitive in their extracurricular activities as well as course offerings with AP, dual enrollment, and the only high school in Ward Eight to offer an IB program. If you close NCP, this brings me to my main point. I have a child that is enrolled in the IB program currently. And if you do close NCP, where is my child supposed to go to finish his IB program? There is not another school in the ward. The only other schools that offer the IB program are Northwest, Northeast. I'm not willing to travel that far. I shouldn't have to travel that far when he's already begun a program here. So that is very important to me, and I would appreciate if you would keep it open, especially for that reason, because they deserve to have an IB program in Ward Eight. And since this is the only school that offers it, it makes no sense to close such a school to offer such a program as this one. They are the only high school I know of in this ward, mostly in DC as well, to offer a cotillion-like event, which is, theirs is called Sankofa, which they offer to 12th graders. And it's a coming-out event for the seniors, teaches them etiquette skills and different life skills that they need once they graduate high school, not just academic skills, but also social skills as well. There are not many high schools that offer that as well. So I'm just asking you to consider those main points and keep NCP open. Thank you.
My name is Doug Wilson. You know, when they started charter schools, they said it was about giving opportunities to parents to send their kids to different places. And yet, it seems like every year, that opportunity's been snatched away, just taken away, while the public schools continue to flounder and flounder and make mistakes. And I'm not quite understanding why that is happening. I'm a father here. I've had four children go through, I have one here now. Those four children that went through, went through as valedictorians, doing well in school, doing quite well in school. One got into Penn, but we didn't go to Penn because they left too much money on the table. So she's at Emory on the dean's list. So NCP has been very, very a blessing to my family. Every 11th grader has an opportunity to go out of the country. Some of these kids never travel, but they get to go out of the country to a foreign country and spend a week or two with brave, brave staff members to enjoy the culture of places. And I don't know of any other school that does that here. So I'm not quite understanding why you're so willing to just continue to snatch opportunities from the parents, which is their right, the God-giving right who teaches their children. It's our God-giving right who we're allowed to help teach our children. And for you to just keep snatching, tells me you really don't give a, you know what I want to say. So I don't understand that, I'm not for that, and I pray that you would do the right thing. Don't do the easy thing, don't do the norm thing, don't do the peer pressure thing, don't do what the State Board of DC wants, that's what's going on. Do what's right by the parents here in east of the river. Don't just do that other stuff, the political stuff that just goes along with, because it's unfair. You know, you've been called to this office, you've been called to help us teach and raise our children. I pray you take it seriously and don't see it just as a number. I pray you do. God bless you.
Good evening. How's everybody today? Happy New Year. Some of you haven't seen us last year. Remember me, boy? Hello? I'm Beverly West, proud parent of a National Honor Road student here at NCP. My son came here with a 3.5. Now, he's carrying a steady 4.2, and he's in the AP program. But I want to tell you something, we got a system here that could work. It doesn't need to be torn down. Just tweak it, make it better. We don't need to tear it down because we got a pearl here east of the river. See the parent over there? See that parent over there? Every alumni student right now, stand up, stand up. Any alumni here, stand up. Be proud, you from NCP. Be proud. The majority of these babies right here, there is somebody that's accredited for you, four-year university, doing something good. Okay? So don't break it, don't tear it down, tweak it, and come help us. See you next time.
My name is Charles Thornton, and I really didn't come here to say anything. I didn't know that there would be an opportunity to say anything, but, you know, and I could have sat at home, which I usually do, and don't come out and speak in forms like this. But I'm here today, and my grandson, I'm raising a grandchild, and he's an IB student as well, 12th grade IB student here at National Collegiate. And he's on track to go to college. He's on track to go to college. Now, he was at Wilson in the 10th grade and had all Fs. And now, he's here at IB, in an IB curriculum, on track to go to college, and it's real clear to me why that happened. It's because of the atmosphere here. So I'm not understanding no kind of way how they can even, you know, be considering closing a program like this. Now, he's on his way to college. I don't have to be here. But I'm here so that other people, other kids, can get an opportunity to be in an atmosphere like this and turn their lives around, too. This works. It works. He went from all Fs to 3.5 IB, and I'm proud of him. And this is my grandson I'm raising. So I can't, it's not even really making sense whatsoever that we would even have to come here. You know, I'm just, I'm dumbfounded. I can't even understand why, and the community is out, I think it's clear, these are people's lives. And I know the alternative, prison and death. Prison and death. So I mean, it's really not even making no sense to even have to come here to say these things when it's obvious it's changing people's lives. And I'm telling my kids, it's changing their lives.
NCP, I had seven, I have seven kids to go here. One is in college. She graduating 2021 because of this school. You're not going to find no other school in DC that takes the 11th graders to Panama. You're not going to do it. If y'all close these schools down, that's just like putting these kids out on the street. So don't close our school, because like I said, I'm grandma. I'll step to you in a heartbeat. Let this school stay open. Where are our kids supposed to go? I'm not sending mine to Baloo. I'm not sending mine to Anacostia. I'm not sending mine to Third Good Marshall. When they open the doors at NCP, this is where my kids can continue on going. If I got to go out here and hit the lottery to pay some notes or whatever y'all need, but my kids are continuing going to NCP, National Collegiate Prep.
Okay, thank you. We'll now be moving on to the current parents, or current students, pardon me. Let me call the first five students on the list. Victoria Bell, Robert Franklin, Deja Glover, Alexis McLean, Terrell Page. Okay, great. If you could just state your name and then get started, thank you.
Hello, my name is Victoria Bell, and I'm a current senior. I have attended this school for all four years. I am here to testify on behalf of National Collegiate Prep story. National Prep supports, program has supported me and kept me out of trouble. I have been able to create personal bonds with my coaching also, and also teachers I have found that collegiate has also shown concern for students, either it be academic or personal. I'm also one of the few IB students here. And I can say, without the IB program, I wouldn't be thinking about going to college. It pushed me to do better. And honestly, with all the other schools that I've been through, I wouldn't be prepared if I would never came here. Without NCP, I wouldn't be doing anything with my life.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Franklin, and I'm a 12th grade IB student here at NCP. I have been at NCP since my freshman year. This school has given me opportunities I never thought I would experience during my high school years. I have had the privilege to go to Panama for a week to experience a different culture and the way they live. We were able to use our Spanish to talk to other people that we have learned at NCP. I have also been given the honor to go out of the DMV area to different states in order to compete against different schools and other teams in RC racing through the STEM program. In the STEM program, I have learned about computers, how to build a computer, and a little about coding. This school has helped me realize my passion for computer science. I believe I was able to do this at this school because of its small and intimate setting. Whenever I email my teachers for assistance, they have always responded to me the same day with any help I needed. I have never had any teacher deny me any help. The teachers have always let the students know, if there's anything they need to talk about, do not hesitate to talk to them. They have always been there and willing to help their students. I am proud of who I have become in these four years because of my education here at NCP. Thank you for your attention and time.
Good evening. My name is Deja Glover, class of 2019. I've been going to National Collegiate Prep since 10th grade. National Collegiate have made a huge impact on me. For one, National Collegiate Prep gave me the opportunity to join the IB program. The IB program taught me how to become an open-minded student by giving me a platform showing my ability and skills. And I'm thank, and I thank the school for that. Also, the IB program let us give back to the community by creating a mural for the school. Having small classes are beneficial to me because it's easy to build connections with your teachers, and you can get a lot of support from your teachers and staff. My teacher benefits me by reminding me that I am a full-time student and I have responsibilities. Without them, I wouldn't be a strong-minded student I am today. I'm thankful for many activities the school provide for me. I became a band dancer in the 10th grade, and ever since then, I built connections with people that have the same interests with me. Making sure I'm on the right track and having a bright future is important to me. The school does a good job by doing so. My teachers have office hours I can go to if I need help with anything. My teachers make sure whatever I do is 110%. For example, my teachers will stay after school, or they will have Saturdays where we just meet and go through work like IAs. I enjoy the qualities of National Collegiate that they bring to me and every student. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Alexis McLean, and I'm an 11th grader at National Collegiate Prep. I would like to share the many reasons on why the school that I attend, which is National Collegiate Prep, should remain open. NCP is a school that gives every person's child an opportunity to apply for as many colleges and universities that they will feel comfortable with applying for, no matter, no wonder why everyone will call it a college prep school. There are plenty of great sports that every student is able to get in good shape from, stronger and well-built in. The main key in order for each student to participate in a sport is good grades, great attitude, and always staying focused. National Collegiate Prep is an easy school to pass through, and every teacher and staff makes sure every student's prepared for every lesson that comes our way. Even though it's pretty challenging, we are getting tested on whether we are ready for the real world or not, and if not, we will be because of every teacher in this building. Each person that attends NCP to this day knows the truth about this school, and specifically knows that this is a great school no matter the size, as long as you are focused and independent enough to make better decisions. National Collegiate Prep is a public charter high school, are full of believers and achievers. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Terrell Page, class of 2019. When I attempted, attended Friendship Collegiate Academy, it wasn't right. This school is right for me. It's more than about academics. It helps me with my life problems. I have great bonds with teachers, friends. They teach me a lot about life in this school. If you close the doors to this school, you will open the doors to jail. I'm pretty sure no, no parent would want that. I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm no public speaker, but this is...
You're doing great.
My first year here at National Collegiate was last year. I enjoyed this school so much. Every day, it just put a smile on my face, the teachers, the students, everything, sports, everything. Everybody gets treated equally in this school, no bullying. Everybody makes each other's day in here. If you shut this down, you will destroy a lot of bonds, a lot of stuff we creating in the building. We are going through a process. I know we going through a process right now, but if y'all could work with us, trust me, we could get through this.
All right, thank you.
I have, could I ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
Sir, I have a quick question for you. So last year in your first year, our records show that one out of every three students at the school elected not to return this year. Do you have any idea why that is, given the positive experience that you had?
No, sir.
Thank you.
We have a couple more, we have a couple more students who registered to speak, Melian Parks and Shamara Sutherland. Do we have Melian Parks or Shamara Sutherland? Okay, let's move on then to alumni. Deandre Mitchell Taylor, Christian Powell, Rozan Taylor, Ariana Wilson, Sharaya Wilson. Melian Parks and Shamara Sutherland for the students. And Derek McGee, if you're here as well, Derek McGee, alumni.
And again, there are two mics, so if you want to queue up on both mics to transition quickly. Again, there are two mics, so if you want to queue up on both mics to transition quickly.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ms. Nelson. I'm the art teacher here at National Collegiate Prep and I was given the privilege to read a letter from an alumni, Ariana Wilson. The IB program was a rigorous experience I had the pleasure to be a part of. The challenges included adjusting schoolwork with extracurriculars, having homework and projects, as well as accepting work may take longer than planned. Once I got to college, I was more than prepared for the rigor. Being a part of the IB program generated time management, openness, and adjustments and change and critical thinking. I can say I have not felt the amount of stress that my peers have. Just because a student has not received exceptional scores to earn an IB diploma does not mean the program is ineffective. Taking a two-year experience and deciding whether or not it is successful by only examining the end product is unfair. Ariana Wilson, class of 2014.
Thank you. Thank you. Would one of you like to start down here on the end? Great, just press the button.
Speak, okay. My name is Derek McGee. I am an alumni. I graduated in year 2015. I went to Johnson and Wales University. I graduated with my associate's degree in culinary arts. I'm currently a massage therapy student in Northern Virginia School of Massage Therapy in Vienna, Virginia. I think this school has way too much to offer to shut it down. Because from, we were at, over at Waller Place and it was like so much more drama just to go to class and it was like the neighborhood students would give you problems because you're going to class. Right here, it's like all the students come from right here. And it's like just to have that and nestle in that and be able to grow from that is amazing. And the teachers are, they're intuitive, they're with you, they're here with you. They want to know more about you. They want to learn you, they want to learn from you, they want to help you. And to take that away and like short us is messed up. It's not okay because there's too many people who work so hard every day to get their kids out to this school and they know the teachers have so much in store for them, so they want them to see that and want them to take that and understand. And to answer your question to you, sir, I'm assuming, so many students don't want to come back because they don't know what's here, you know? It's difficult for a high school student to know what's in the future, what's in, what's in the next five years, to know what they want to do, to be super confident in that. They won't know. So a survey, yes, it will say, I don't want to come back. But me being an alumni, I thank God that I'm able to be here and speak today because it shakes me. Like my voice is shaking right now to even think that this school will be gone. Like, it's not okay to me. I think, so I think that we all need to stand up and see what's really out here in this school and be able to actually, you know, love the next person. And I think that this school definitely has that. There's so many different programs that takes our student, takes students away from all that negative drama that's on the street to like, there's after-school programs, music, music programs, there's dance programs, there's, there's the STEM class. There are all these different things that this world is not offering. So I think that we all, we definitely have that here and we shouldn't stop there now.
My name is Christian Powell. I graduated year 2017. And I was also shook when I was told to come here to speak on the school closing. Because in four years, I was given the opportunities to complete over 150 community service hours, travel outside the country, and join three sports as well as four extracurricular clubs. I don't think those things would be offered in another private, in another public school with a larger setting and less opportunity for students like me who aren't very outspoken in the beginning, who aren't very open to meeting new people. But because we're in a smaller setting and because we're in our own little area, we can focus on the things that we need to, we can help give those students that one-on-one attention they need to reach their full potential. I'm currently going to ODU. I started school with over 16,000 in scholarships and grants because of my school, because of the opportunities I was given. So if you ask me, what should this school be shut down for? There's no reason this school should be shut down. I was offered way too much for it to be shut down. I worked way too hard for it to still be standing here for you to try to shut it down. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deandre Mitchell Taylor. I am alumni here and a current employee. I graduated in 2015. The reason why National Collegiate should stay open for numerous reasons. I attended National Collegiate in the 10th grade, coming from Achilles Tech High School, a very big environment. I learned that that wasn't me. I learned that I'm a very small classroom learner and NCP helped me out with that. Got to the 11th grade and NCP offered me to go to Panama. Told me I had to get a certain amount of money and I can go. Two days later, NCP told me I didn't have to raise no money to go to Panama. They was just going to pay for me and all I need is to bring is myself, the luggage and my passport. NCP gives you a lot of opportunities that a lot of schools doesn't. Teachers care. And when I mean by care, I'm not saying, oh, how was your weekend? How was your day? Did you make it home safe? I'm talking about, did you eat that night? Do you have clothes on your back? I don't know no other teachers or no other school field with staff members that's willing to go out their own hard work and money to make sure our kids getting home safe, eating that night. Also got clothes on their back, cold, if it's cold, we're going to give you coats, whatever we do, we go above and beyond. Instead of shutting it down, let's figure out some ways to keep it open. This is the only school, literally the only school for these kids. A lot of these kids, if this school shut down, what do you think these kids are going to do? Where do you think they're going to go? A lot of these kids is in so much stuff, situations that y'all don't even know about. They can't go to Baloo. They can't go to Anacostia. Why? Because their situations are in Anacostia or in Baloo. We lost two students here. One of them graduated and one of them didn't even get the chance to graduate. Zalor Harris got killed in Berry Farms. And it's a bystander just standing around enjoying his freedom and his time. Another kid got shot at the bus stop because he had on the popular shoes that was out that weekend. Like I said, where these kids going to go? What they going to do if you guys shut this school down? That's my main question.
Hello, my name is Razan Taylor. I graduated in 2014. I'm an alumni here at NCP. And just like my peers said, hearing that this school may shut down, it broke my heart, honestly. To answer your question, when I attended this school, I got into a bit of trouble. In my junior year, NCP gave me a second chance. Where I'm from, in Northeast DC, I travel from Northeast every morning to get here to school on time. To answer your question, it's a choice. NCP gave me the chance to make a choice for myself, a second chance. They didn't have to do that. A second chance to make a choice to do something with my life. And they did not only give me that second chance, they gave me the tools to make the decision that yes, I got accepted in a lot of schools. I made the choice not to go because I didn't want to take out loans and put my mother in debt to gain the education. I decided to wait and now that the job that I work for, they're paying for me to get a free education. So to hear that you're going to shut this school down, like my brother said, where these kids going to go? What they going to do? Who going to give them that choice? Are you? Just like they said, how about we talk about how can we keep this school open? How can we get these, these children a choice? A choice? Because that's all, a lot of, a choice, that's it. And a chance to make a difference. No one gives us a chance. That's all we need, a chance and a choice.
Good evening. My name is Sharaya Wilson. I was a valedictorian of the class of 2013, the founding class of National Collegiate Prep. So when I was a freshman at James Madison University, I was struggling in my chemistry class. And when I came home for Thanksgiving break, I reached out to my high school chemistry teacher, Mr. Calvin Wilson, for extra help. Without hesitation, Mr. Wilson offered his help to me. We spent hours going over problems I was struggling with. This memory has stuck with me throughout the years because though I was no longer his student, Mr. Wilson's help was truly an act of genuine care and concern for my academic success. He took time out of his day to make sure I was understanding concepts and ensuring my success in this course. NCP has brought me educators who care about my success after high school and even after undergrad. There's someone always willing to help me, whether it is with continuing my education or finding a job I truly enjoy. Because of NCP, I have a strong support system that I will have for many years to come. And that is one isolated incident that I've had with many people in this school. I can take anybody's name of any staff member that works in this school and put it in to an essay like that. This is not just Mr. Wilson. This is Ms. Little. This is Brown. This is Stallings. This is all of them. This is Holly. This is everybody who works at this school. This is not just Mr. Wilson. And coming from the first class and seeing where they are now and to think that I won't be here. I have a brother that goes here and this is the best thing that happened to me. This is the one reason I made it through college and the one reason I'm still going because I can come back home to these people. This is home. And I need my home. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll move on now to teachers and staff who have signed up to speak tonight. Azar Equiozo.
I just, I just want y'all to pay attention to how many people in this room is shedding tears right now because this is a school. This is not a funeral. This is school and these people are shedding tears because we're about to lose it. So.
Thank you. Idris, Idris Morgan Nicholson, Samuels, and Yorex.
Good evening, everyone. When I was interviewed for this position, my name is Chinedu Equiozo. I'm the geometry teacher. When I was interviewed for this position, I tried to make sure that I have a firm grasp of the spirit of the school. What do I mean? I wanted to make sure that the administration truly cared for the students. My impression was positive and months to come, I congratulated myself that I made the right decision. I'll give you the name. It's the vice president of Maryland Lynch. I was offered a position as a finance wealth management professional. You can call him. He's in DC. His name is R. Kelly. Mr. Ryan Kelly. He was very, he was very upset that I chose NCP. He was very upset that I chose NCP instead of coming to work for Maryland Lynch. And I told him that I've been in education since 2004. And actually, I have one of the teachers here, Ms. Butler. She was one of my students in 2004 at St. Francis Xavier Catholic School. I told him that I made my mind, I made up my mind to come here because I'm one of the best and they deserve the best. I looked, I looked at the program and I looked at the location and I know that they have a disadvantage based on their location. I mean, this is not northwest. So I decided I'm coming here. And after being here for three months, I can tell you with 100% certainty, and my mom told me, do not speak of things, only the things that you are sure of. I can tell you 100% that this school is a good school. And instead of closing it, I was shocked to hear that at first, anyway. I think we should find ways to actually improve and expand it. And if you, if you ever need help, suggestions on how to move that forward, I am here to help. So that's, that's basically what I want to say. No school is perfect, you know? It's a dynamic thing. The school is going through leadership and so on and so forth. They have to bring up stuff. We have to try stuff. This doesn't work. This works. We learn something. We unlearn certain things. We are growing. And I can assure you that there's a great potential here. That's why I'm here. I am here to help and I can assure you 100% that you should not close this school. This school should stay here. This school should stay and expand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Everyone. My name is Kwesi Asari and my undergraduate degree is in mathematics. I have an honors degree in mathematics. I'm a certified mathematics teacher. I'm a master Kente weaver and I also incorporate math with weaving of Kente designs and I engage children to break down the mathematics. Presently pursuing a master's and doctoral program in mathematics. Firstly, I would like to thank you all for coming out and would like to reiterate that National Collegiate Preporyory Public Charter School should not be shut down. The founder and chief executive officer's vision falls directly in line with the missions and beliefs of the school. The children in Ward Eight should be given an opportunity for a secure, sound education which will lead them to college and other endeavors in life. This is my third year teaching in this school and I've made a number of observations. The kids warm up to you as time goes by and they react in a better way. I've witnessed measurable success in terms of students solving sophisticated math problems. Coming originally from Ghana in West Africa where there's a concentration of STEM education, I was delighted to be given the opportunity to teach higher grades. I also teach the IB math classes and have observed improved academic performance by students. The IB program enables students to think outside the box and this is reflected through the various internal assessments that I need to comment on. Being the only IB school east of the river, I believe the kids should be given this opportunity. And in a nutshell, I believe in such community, I believe children in such communities should be given an opportunity to a sound education. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Karen Nicholson. I'm the certified food safety manager at National Collegiate Prep. And I've been here since September 2010. We have a lot of reasons, a lot of concerns about why we should not close NCP. And in the position that I hold, my concern is one that we wouldn't think a lot about because food is such the norm for everybody. But here in Ward Eight, some of our children come to school to eat. If they did not come to school every day, they wouldn't eat every day. Over the years, we found, everybody's looking out, teachers are looking out, administrators, other students, everybody's looking out. So somebody will let us know who's having a hard time and what they're in need of. And we try to go above and beyond doing what we need to do to provide for these children. What will keep me awake at night if we're not here is where will they eat every day? I'm sorry. Because I have kids, we serve breakfast, lunch, and supper. And I have kids at supper that have come to me and said, Ms. Nicholson, can I have three sandwiches? We can't get credit for three sandwiches, but because I've been allowed to order so that we will make sure that our children... that we will make sure that our children eat, I can give, and I want to know, "Why do you need three sandwiches? Are you going to eat all three?" No, because I have a brother and a sister next door who have to eat tonight, and we don't have anything to eat. So, and I noticed even with the government shutdown, all over the city, pop-up places have popped up. And Ward Eight, I haven't seen anything pop up for Ward Eight. Even when Mayor Bowser and Osse did pop-ups earlier this week, it was Ward Seven, Ward Five, Four, and One. Where is Ward Eight included? Where? Who cares about what's happening to our children in Ward Eight? We need to be here for more reasons than one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce, nice to see you again. I remember the first time we met. I told you that I'm sorry for my accent. The first thing you told me, "Never apologize to anybody for your accent." You remember that? Okay, you were observing my class. So today, I'm not going to apologize for my accents. I learned from you. Thank you for telling me that. It's been a great lesson. Anyway, my name is Idris. I'm from, popularly known here as the African. Okay. So to start, I would first like to express my profound and sincere gratitude to our founder, Ms. Ross. In my book, she's one of the modern-day civil rights leader. You might think I'm crazy, but it's the truth. Okay, to introduce myself, again, my name is Dr. Idris. It's hard when you're thinking about closing this school. You know, I'm qualified, I have my PhD. First, let me start, I have my undergrad in Pennsylvania, one of the finest schools in America. And I have my master's and my PhD in what they're called the Mekka of Black, Howard Martin Luther King once said that not everybody can be popular or famous, but everybody can be great by what? Through service. Ms. Ross is one of our great leaders, through service. As I said, I have my PhD in international relations, American government, public policy, and public administration. I am also an author. I wrote a book, if you'd like, we can go and get it. I'm not trying to advertise my book. This is one of my books I wrote.
Can I just ask?
And this is another one. All to say that I'm qualified to teach here.
Absolutely.
That I know what I'm talking about. That's what I'm saying, that closing this school honestly is doing the service to the students and to the community. So in my conclusion, I would like to ask these questions. In your deliberation, you put that in perspective. What would be the benefit of closing this school? So my appeal during your deliberation is to please consider the following questions. If you burn down a house, can you conceal the smoke? What is the price of closing this school? What do you expect from the student and the family and the community? What do you expect them to do? Please, if you truly believe that all things are possible, you must give NCP a chance to do better and be better. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ms. Morgan. I am the IB coordinator here at NCP, a cheerleading coach, and a theory of knowledge teacher among many other duties. I have begun with NCP since November 2010. NCP provides a strong structure for our students. The culture at NCP drives students to be prepared for college and furthering their education. The IBDP program is an awesome opportunity for our students. It is and has developed strong college-bound students. The program allows students to develop time management skills, self-discipline, which is greatly needed as a college student. Students have the opportunity to be part of a program that enhances and challenges them. With all the courses becomes internal assessments, which are intense, demanding, in-depth projects, which causes students to maximize on how they ask critical questions, how they use their time, how to collect data, how to work with their peers, how to advocate for themselves, how to write a paper on analysis, how to present, how to do a reflection paper, how to cite correctly, how to answer prescribed titles, write a 4,000-word research paper, and the list goes on. Having IBDP a program at NCP not only sets NCP apart from other neighborhood schools for having a prestigious program, but it allows students in this community who cannot afford to go somewhere else to come here and experience this and say that they have experienced the IB diploma program. IB students allow, IB allows students to be a part of something bigger and global than themselves, but it benefits them individually. Although earning an IB diploma will be an outstanding accomplishment, it is also extremely difficult to attain. The IB program puts emphasis on students being at the center and students learning as well as bringing their experiences to the program. The IB program is not a pass or fail program. Their entire two years of the program, the internal assessments, external assessments, are calculated in their final scores. As you already know, our students enter ninth grade below reading level, and we have to reteach and teach students how to be students, teaching them study skills, learning how to do homework. Doing homework can sometimes be a foreign word to our students. But here at NCP, we have a structure that they have rigorous homework and they have to get it done in a timely fashion. NCP has implemented the AVID program. NCP also has the writing program that will have writing across the curriculum. As a coach at NCP, I have also been able to wear many hats. Not only do students learn how to function as a team, but they listen to each other, which is extremely important. I have watched my athletes use skills they have learned and practiced during the school day. Our department is awesome and is developing for such a small school. Thank you for your time. NCP is a small but dynamically structured school in Southeast. There are many plans and ideas that have yet come to fruition.
So I have a question that was posed during last month's meeting. So you have heard the IB program brought up seven times, if not more, this evening. And we posed this question during the December hearing. So my question to you as the person running the program is, one, can you give us data around the number of graduates who have finished with an IB diploma in the last four years?
Okay, we have not had a student finish with an IB diploma. In order for you to earn an IB diploma, do you happen to know what the matrix is and how it's made up? You know, you have to have certain level courses in your HL and your SL. The students have the opportunity, but not all can do the program. Just simply having one IB class is greatly beneficial to the student. But no one has accomplished the IB diploma, and it's not something that's attainable for a lot of students in this area, and there are a lot of students in public schools, whether in Virginia, Maryland, that still have not earned the IB diploma. But the experience alone has set them apart.
And so my question then is, are we talking about IB exposure? Or are you saying that there is a full and robust IB program here?
There is a full program here. After the first or the second cohort, we had to make it optional where the student had the opportunity to choose whether or not they were the full program. Some of the students could not handle the six courses and the core. They could only handle certain classes that they were interested in. But yes, there are people who are, there are students right now are current senior class. We have four full diploma students who are taking the full program, Duncas, Extended Essay, and TOK.
And so you anticipate that you will have four individuals who will be graduating this spring with an IB diploma?
Four who are working to getting an IB diploma.
And they're seniors?
Yes, four seniors, yes. But we have 16 total IB students, seniors.
16 total IB students and four who are?
Full diploma students.
Full diploma students.
Okay. And you do know how they have to actually earn the diploma? Not just having the classes, they have to have the scores. Okay. They have to have the scores.
They have to earn a four on each of the subject tests, plus pass TOK, Extended Essay.
Okay, and the word isn't pass, it's just getting a score because it's not a pass or fail.
Yes. So just, I have a follow-up question as well. Last year, how many full IB diploma students were there?
Our class last year, 2018, we had no one who was a full IB diploma. We had students who had six IB classes.
And that was my question because we show that last year and three years ago, not a single student took the theory of knowledge assessment, and not a single student received a grade of any sort on the extended essay.
Okay, last year's students, when they interviewed in in their 10th grade year, no one was qualified as we saw fit to handle the full program. Now, the second cohort, that was three years ago, they all had the full program, their 11th grade year. They asked that they could not handle it. And their 12th grade year, they were taken out of my class, theory of knowledge. They were taken out of classes they felt they could not handle. But the program started with everyone who was in IB being in IB. But as we developed and we learned, our students couldn't handle the full program. Instead of scaring them away, we gave them the opportunity to choose.
And so just to understand, did any students take theory of knowledge last year?
The senior class? No, but the juniors who were seniors now, they took the IB class, yes. It's a two-year course.
I understand.
So my, I guess my question, my line of questioning is more so, why not incorporate a higher level of curriculum for all of the students here that has an exposure to IB versus there being the idea of this is an IB program where there hasn't been anyone to graduate from the school with an IB diploma? So I'm still deliberating over where I sit on this. But what I don't want to do is give the false sense to people that the IB program here is a full-fledged program that people are graduating with, with a diploma, right? Because you work hard and you recognize, yes, and it's good that the students are able to recognize whether or not they are able to fulfill the full program. But if we're telling parents that this is an IB program and that is something that we're not able to fulfill, not you personally, but collectively as a school, then it, to me, and this is casting no aspersions on any individual here, that is a misrepresentation of what is actually happening here. Now, the high expectations, the high bar, you all having the understanding that every student here is capable of what's possible for them? Absolutely. That is something that should be offered to every student, seven, eight, six, five, all of the wards here in the district. But if we're going to tell parents that their students are in an IB program, then let them actually graduate with a diploma or say that we have IB exposure. But selling, and I hate to use the word selling, but giving people the idea that this is a full-fledged IB program, that people are being offered a diploma, and that is not the case, it sits very different with someone, I can't observe, excuse me, I can't sit here and say, when hearing people refer over and over again to the program as a hinge for why this is so important, if we're not giving that to students in its totality.
Okay, so I'm not sure of the language that you have read, but as far as selling the program, or not rather, selling, but we do have a full IB diploma program at NCP.
Right.
IB themselves, which I can email to you, as you said, I can email information later, IB says it is great, it's effective for a student to be exposed to IB.
Absolutely.
I don't remember us ever saying that every student that takes IB at NCP will have an IB diploma. That is something they're working towards getting. It's up to whatever score they get on their exams, calculate a total for those points if they're going to earn that diploma. But we're not misrepresenting, they do have the opportunity to work towards earning an IB diploma here at National Collegiate Prep.
Can you, one last question?
Yes.
And I'm sorry to take the time away. My question, and I'm referring, what I'm referring to here is the transcript from last month's meeting. My question is, how many students did you have enrolled in the theory of knowledge class? Not this current school year, but the two prior school years?
Okay. How many? So class of 2018 was not a full diploma. Class of 2017 had six.
Years, the year before that?
The first graduating class, all of them, that was 12.
Okay.
The second graduating class, they were all enrolled, but they're the ones who started and they're the ones who asked to be taken out. They took theory of knowledge for both years. They took, turned in their essays too, so they are registered for that. The third graduating class was a class that, as juniors, they asked to be taken out of the program. So when they had everything for 11th grade year, at the end of their 11th grade year, they asked to be taken out of classes they could not handle. The fourth graduating class, we had theory of knowledge students. The class of 2017, the class of 2018 is the first class, we had registered students that were not going to take theory of knowledge.
Okay.
Something else I do need to add, no students in DC have earned diploma for the period of 10 years.
I need to correct the record on that.
Please say it again.
Eastern High School has awarded 42 international baccalaureate diplomas in the past three years.
Eastern High School?
Eastern, yes, DCPS Public High School.
Okay. And charter schools?
All right. Hello. Hello. My name is Mr. Minal. I'll be reading excerpts from a letter on behalf of Mr. Yarx. He couldn't be with us tonight, but I am also an IB history teacher. Mr. Yarx is a highly qualified IB sciences teacher, and he wrote a longer piece, which I highly encourage you to read the full, but I will give some excerpts now. So these are his words now. "One of the things that initially attracted me to NCP was its small size and the potential for a school in Southeast DC to offer local students a chance to participate in an internationally-known program such as the IB program. I felt inspired by the mission of National Collegiate Prep and knew that I wanted to be a part of a school that could offer so much to a community in need. IB programs should not be offered exclusively to privileged children, and admission to such programs should not be hindered by admissions, examinations, or waiting lists. At NCP, we don't equate the lack of an IB diploma with failure. We recognize the demands of an IB program, as do our students. The aim of the program is to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. The students that take IB classes learn to think differently. They learn how to express their own ideas and listen to the ideas of others. They become better students and individuals who are more aptly prepared for university-level academics as well as life beyond the DMV. In fact, recent studies indicate that IB classes specifically help low-income students. Even taking just one IB course has been shown to increase the likelihood of a student attending and remaining in college beyond their first semester. NCP's opportunities extend beyond the IB program. Each year, many students come to us well below grade level in ELA and math. Often, we see remarkable progress with many of these students who perhaps only needed to be surrounded by dedicated staff and attention being paid to their specific needs. We have watched as some students with the lowest scores excel and even become a part of the IB program. Our students are often pushed through the system despite not performing at grade level. Once they arrive at NCP, our staff have only two years to overcome these knowledge gaps and prepare each student for the park, a 10th grade exam. This means that the majority of students may need to jump two or more grade levels before they can meet the content knowledge or proficiency of a typical 10th grader. In closing, I truly hope you can sincerely consider a course of action that puts our students above all other considerations. These young women and men deserve to have teachers dedicated to their education. They deserve to have a safe... They deserve to have a safe space to learn, and most of all, they deserve the right to seek opportunities to better themselves and to better their future. Thank you for your time, Lee Yerkes."
Good evening, my name is Nigel Jackson. I'm a staff member here at National Collegiate. I wanted to, um, I wanted to respond to a question, Mr. Pearson, that you asked earlier. Ward Eight has been disenfranchised for too long, and our people have not had a voice. Tonight, you see this whole room filled with a voice. And what I'm not going to do is allow you to ask a 17-year-old student a question. To show him- A question that he may not understand the complexities of. What does that teach him? He can answer why he chose, but to ask him why one out of three, he doesn't know if that data is accurate. He hasn't had time to prepare, and it teaches him that he doesn't have a voice. That's the problem in the first place. Our school has many, a host of non-academic reasons to answer your question. We have a very transient population, homelessness, divorce, safety transfers, just the general belief that everything outside of Ward Eight is better. This is a belief that most people hold. So our parents are looking for a better way for their children. Some of them are telling you that they found it tonight. But when they are looking for that better way, everything is better than Ward Eight. That's the belief that we're trying to change. But when you ask him a question like that, it reinforces to him that he has no voice. It reinforces to the community that they have no voice, and that's the exact opposite, and that's antithetical of what our school is here to do.
So when Scott asked that question, and this is in no way, shape, or form me defending Scott, this, no- Go ahead and answer, go ahead and answer. No, I want to, actually, let me just go ahead and say this. The question, and understood, the question that he posed was a question that I would have posed to a student that was before me. Let me finish, answer, let me finish. This isn't me defending Scott, this is a question that I was planning to ask.
Naomi, Naomi, please, please just let Naomi finish her statement, and then I, I think Scott has something to say as well, just finish, please.
So the question was posed, I would have asked the question. I would have easily asked the question, and- And I'm a grown woman, can you let me finish my statement? Understood, 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 can we ha- understood. The question would have been posed to a student, as I've done at your event. I said specifically, I would like to hear from students what their experiences are so that we can have a clear understanding of what it is that students believe, understand, and can speak up for when it comes to the experience of their, their class. Understood, understood, understood. So-
Thank you.
So my question, and asking the young man, or any other student that I would like to talk to after this hearing, that's fine. Understood, but I know that students talk to one another, sure, and we can sign up and have a whole host of conversations. Please, so what I, what I will say is, if I would have asked the question, again, Scott can respond to this on his own, my asking, he will.
Yes. Everyone, ladies and gentlemen, please, let's just, let's just wrap up this conversation. Let's just wrap up this point, and we'll move on to Scott.
So my question to you, and not for tonight, but to you, would be, can we have the opportunity to have students provide feedback as to either classmates, friends, family, who have decided not to return? Can we hear an authentic voice, I'm posing this question to the staff member? Can we have an opportunity to hear from students directly as to why they've heard from one another? How, why, and then for what reasons people have decided not to return to the school? So I would love, I posed the question to him. So at, at some point, I would like for that, I would like to have that happen before we vote on the 20th.
I suggest, I, I recommend that we take this off the table and have a follow-up discussion about any, any further inputs. And please, Scott, go ahead.
So I, I just want to respond, which is that when I asked the young man that question, my intention was to give him voice. He had a lot to say, and I wanted to hear more. What I hear from you is that, that I got that wrong, and for that, I apologize to the young man and to this community.
Okay, thank you.
Can I respond to that, please?
Okay, quickly, please.
I understand the intensity, it's a high-pressure moment, people are emotional. So I, I think what you're hearing is just the passion and the appreciation that this parents in the community. Naomi, absolutely. I just think that given the tone of the question, the spirit of the question, it was not received that way when you present data to a young man who hasn't had the opportunity to prepare, did not know that was coming, that perhaps he'd give a more meaningful response, if that's what we're looking for, if he had the time to prepare. Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you. I, I think we have one, I think we have one more teacher still on the list to go, thank you.
Check, can you hear me? Thank you, thank you. My name is Mr. Jason Muhammad. I'm originally from Miami, Florida, 2007 graduate of Florida A&amp;M. I moved to Washington DC, my first year I spent teaching out at Paul Public Charter School. NCP has done something groundbreaking. My job entails coming into a school as a lieutenant in the Nation of Islam. I come into a school where there's been four homicides over the weekend, and I have to talk to 22 students that knew that child personally. And we talk, and we know what PTSD is. They test it in urban areas and say that our children are suffering with levels like they live in a war zone. So when you ask them to, to do their best on a test, to do their best on a test, when they don't know if they're going to live tomorrow. Because I had a student that couldn't stand in front of the school after we got out of football practice because they had just killed a 10-year-old in northeast. So when you prepare to do the annual review of a 10-year charter, you also must have the responsibility to prepare if you decide to close the school. You have to have that responsibility. And if you're not in the position to have that responsibility to rebuild what you're trying to tear down, you also can't make that decision. Because these people that I have to spend every day with, that I go home with, I'm the first person in the building, I wake up at 5 o'clock every morning to get here so that they can see someone having, so they can have an example of what it's like to come to work every day and have someone sacrifice for them every day. And I have a 10-month-old daughter now, that many of them know personally, to give them exposure to what a family structure is like. To keep my phone on all night in case a parent calls me and I got to go to a house. Yeah, I leave my house at 10 o'clock at night to go help a grandmother deal with a grandson because her mother, the mother of the child that I serve died of AIDS. And I grew up in 1980, I was born in 1985. I grew up in the crack epidemic. So I understand what these students are suffering, and yet, they can overcome. They can, but they have to have a teacher. How can they have a teacher unless one is sent to them? So all I'm asking you to do is understand your role and your responsibility. If you're also not obligated to rebuild, then morally, morally, you can't make the decision to destroy something that you did not help build. Thank you.
Okay, we also have a couple of stakeholders who signed up to speak tonight. Darius Baker and Kevin Smith. Dar- Darius Baker or Kevin Smith, are you here? Okay, great.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Philip Premdas. I'm the Assistant Site Director for the University of the District of Columbia Community College, next door. I'm actually Mr. Baker's assistant. He unfortunately couldn't make it this evening, so I'm reading a letter on his behalf. Greetings. I am Darius Baker, Director for the Patricia Robert Harris Campus of the University of the District of Columbia Community College, Division of Workforce Development and Lifelong Learning. WDLL provides District of Columbia residents with job skills training that enables them to pursue employment opportunities. WDLL focuses on industries that provide the highest number of employment opportunities within the District of Columbia and in the metropolitan area. The seven areas identified by the District of Columbia as most in demand include: automotive and truck maintenance and repair, construction and property management, early childhood education, healthcare direct and healthcare administration, hospitality and tourism, information technology and office administration, and infrastructure, transportation, and logistics. During my tenure as Campus Director, we have focused on increasing our partnership and presence within the high schools of Ward Eight. WDLL and NCP share the Patricia Roberts Harris Educational Campus, and as a result, our partnership has emerged through UDC's Workforce Edge Agreement. The Workforce Edge Agreement allows the platform for DC high school students to be duly enrolled in WDLL's certification courses as they are on track to graduation. The Workforce Edge Partnership addresses issues of truancy, student engagement, college and career readiness skills, and student retention concerns. After analyzing student survey data, we were able to identify students' pathways of interest within our course offerings and duly enroll interested students. As students are enrolled in our courses, they express a newly-found sense of purpose and motivation. We have seen tremendous successes as students who were previously identified as academically disengaged can now see a clear pathway into, into a career of their choice. I strongly support the National Collegiate Preparatory Public Charter High School and am eager to continue our work together as we focus on uplifting the surrounding community. Signed, Darius Baker, Campus Director.
Thank you. Do we have Kevin Smith? It looks like a number of additional people have also come forward. I, I think we'll be able to make a few extra minutes to have the extra speakers, but let's first have Kevin Smith, and we'll see if we have a few extra minutes.
Also, I just want to note that Board Chair Rick Cruz joined the call about 30 minutes ago.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Walter Smith. I am a member of the 100 Black Men of Greater Washington DC. Before I begin to read you a letter that's going to go on to the record, on behalf of our organization, I'd like to ask that our President Emeritus Barry Hudson, our newly-elected President James Thompson, and the members of the 100 Black Men of Greater Washington DC, please stand that are here today this evening. Please be seated. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, what you have just witnessed are African-American professional men who are titans in industry of politics, professionalism, education, as, in, titans of industry that own their own businesses as well. To my right, you see Mr. Melvin Stallings Jr., who is also a STEM professional, but he's also an educator here at National Collegiate Prep. For the expedience of time, I'll get through this letter really quick and make a statement. Dear Charter Board Members, this letter is written on behalf of our organization, the 100 Black Men of Greater Washington DC, to support the continued operations of National Collegiate Preparatory Charter, Public Charter High School. 100 Black Men of Greater Washington DC began working with National Collegiate PCS in 2014 by providing high-quality STEM education, focused programming after school and on Saturdays. We work with students in grades nine through 12 to provide them value-added, experiential learning and standards based on STEM instruction. This work includes instruction that is facilitated by 100 Black Men members, as well as some of our other partners who are dedicating their time and talents, who have diverse experiences in STEM professions, scientists, engineers, business owners, entrepreneurs. To date, we have served over 315 NCP students and have seen an increase in all our mentees' performance in their PARC examination scores. It's been a pleasure to serve the students, staff, and teachers of the National Collegiate Prep in supporting young scholars to reach their goals. 100 Black Men of Greater Washington is devoted to improving the quality of life for African-American youth in the Washington DC metropolitan area through programs focusing on mentoring, education, economic empowerment, health and wellness, and leadership development, all elements that you see lacking in Ward Eight. We have the privilege of working with youth in the greatest need to help them establish and achieve their goals. Since our founding in 1995, we have been able to serve over 14,000 children and families within our local community in the Greater Washington DC area. We stand firmly committed to continuing this important work with National Collegiate Preparatory Charter High School. We believe the turnaround efforts that have been put in place by the board charter path forward success. We ask that the DC Public Charter School Board would strongly consider extending the charter to authorize National Collegiate Prep. Without reservation, we support their petition. Now, as a personal professional and a STEM engineer, I work as a biomedical engineer. I have my own consulting firm. To commend Ms., uh, to commend Ms. Ross and her staff, they saw that the students were suffering in their science, ELA, and math scores, and they wanted to do something about it. So Ms. Ross extended to Mr. Stallings and myself the opportunity to do a Saturday STEM Achievement Prep Academy that we just spoke of, that has served over 315 students, with the expressed interest in improving science and math scores across the board. I'm not going to say we created record numbers, but what we did, we changed their culture. We have kids that are going to college, we are helping kids get college scholarships. Kids by the members of the 100 Black Men are getting opportunities to go on collegiate bus tours where they're getting admission and scholarships on the spot. But what we've done, by the help of Ms. Ross and the staff here at NCP, we are giving these kids a door out of Ward Eight. We're giving them a door out of poverty, we're giving them a door to prosperity. As a full-fledged African-American, international baccalaureate graduate in 1996, I challenge the board to study the last 15 years of education at the level of IB being offered in Ward Eight. Essentially, if you close National Collegiate Prep, you are closing the highest level of education being offered this side of the Anacostia. Now, how can our people lift themselves up if they are not given the tools to educate? As adults, it is our responsibility to ensure that all of our students are given a chance. International Baccalaureate was my chance out of South Dallas. I'm here in southeast DC to give these kids the same chance. The 100 Black Men of DC is firmly committed to seeing this through. So if you're shutting the school down, know that you're shutting down the efforts of thousands of others who will rally to support National Collegiate Prep. Thank you.
Okay, please state your name as you start as well.
Nick Krug. I'm a teacher here currently at NCP, English teacher, formerly an English teacher at WMST. I'll be reading this letter on behalf of Tamika Johnson, the Program Manager at Avid. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is with great pleasure that I submit this letter of support for National Collegiate Preparatory Public Charter High School in Washington DC. The goals of National Collegiate Prep, NCP, include teaching students to be lifelong learners, giving them the ability to succeed in college and become productive young adults within their communities. The school goals are supported by the mission of Avid College Readiness System that reads in part, "To close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society." When schools partner with Avid, they receive professional development, a suit of re- When schools partner with Avid, they receive professional development, a suite of resources, and ongoing coaching, and support to ensure a lasting and positive impact on teaching and learning. Avid offers a variety of classroom and college-related activities, curriculum resources, and timely articles that are relevant to students. These tools help educators implement and refine instructional practices. Avid's partnership with NCP supports their work to accelerate and enhance current systems and practices. Together, we are working to create change that is measurable and sustainable. The NCP leadership team is supportive of Avid implementation and are currently working to make Avid methodologies an explicit part of the school's strategic plan. The Avid elective and content area faculty observed during visits were dedicated, engaging, and looked forward to deepening their level of involvement with the Avid College Readiness System on their campus. Avid students spoke highly of their experience in the Avid elective classroom and their appreciation for their teachers' demonstrated involvement in their educational journey. We have enjoyed our collaboration with National Collegiate Prep and hope to continue partnering with them to provide students with access to quality learning environments, an array of educational opportunities, and effective supportive systems that promote college and career readiness for all. Sincerely signed by Tamika Johnson, Program Manager. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I see that I have two minutes, but my name is Commissioner Henderson. I'm the ANC Chairperson of ANC 8D. I stand here alone, however, I have many ANC Commissioners that sit on our Board and also from other ANC's that represent the people, to be their voice of each neighborhood in Ward Eight. And those ANC's, if you're here, you can stand or wave your hand so people can identify you or know you. But at the end of the day, the mayor not might be in this room, or the council member not be in this room, but you elected an official that's in this room, and we stand with National Collegiate Prep. So it's very appalling because you have individuals to come into our community and tell us what we need versus we telling them what's working for the people in our community that we serve. So I'm sitting here and I'm listening to everyone. We don't ever go to meetings such as this in Ward Eight, and the room is packed. In order to develop any child, it's a partnership because you have a parent and a teacher that's working with an individual to build them to their highest potential. I have a 12-year-old son, and he goes to all the Columbia Heights to go to school. I'm a product of Hart Junior High. I went to Bellew High School, but under no circumstances, my son is going to neither one of those schools. And I banked on my son attending National Collegiate Prep when he gets to the stage because me personally, I don't like people to know that I'm a Commissioner. I want them to know that I'm your neighbor, I'm your resident, I'm your friend, because when they look at you as a Commissioner, they treat you different, and I don't want them to do that. I want them to know that I stand with them. I understand the struggle. The first thing people say, that we're from an environment of poverty. Yes, is poverty there? Yes, it does exist, but if you didn't know this community 10 years prior to National Collegiate coming here or five years prior, you need to get to know it because their presence even changed the outside of this building, which is a good thing. You hear very great success stories from children that's coming out of National Collegiate Prep, from their voluntary service, from even when they come over to St. Thomas More where the Merrick Center is. They'll see me in the hallway drawing, not even knowing that I'm a Commissioner, but their character itself represents the school. The teachers, it's like you all are sitting at a table with our puzzle that you're going to remove a piece and mess up the whole masterpiece. And it's just not, it's not fair to us. Do people get chances? Yes, people get chances, and I do believe that you all should allow Ms. Ross a chance. Five years, two years, whatever years, but allow her. If you want them to get to that diploma that you want, implement it in the process and allow these children to show you that they're about their business. We had children that come from Wilson. We had children that come from McKinley Tech. You all heard them. It wasn't working for them. The streets is not safe, but in this building, it's like a family. They care. It's not just a teacher. I heard many people say that the teachers here is more of a friend, but they still getting educated. It's so much love. They're not looking at the clock, waiting for the time to run out, and they out the door. They're here making sure that our children over here in Ward Eight that comes from other schools, if it's public, if it's charter, guess what? They're already getting the bag into the stick that they got to take a group of kids now that came from another environment to build them to be successful leaders within the community that we serve. It's hard to do that with children over here in Ward Eight. So I don't know what your plan is, but I think you need to really, really rethink. The ANC came together, and we didn't write a letter to support the hearing as individual. We wrote it on great weight to make sure that you understand that the ANC support National Collegiate Prep and all that they're doing for our community. I didn't even know that it was going to be, I have two minutes, so emotional coming into this room. When I saw so many parents in this room, I'm like, now, this is how you win over the process. Because once we send our children home, they go straight to the parents, and if the parent is not doing their job, they got to send them right back here, and they got to start all over again to try to make them children successful. So I just thank you all for this opportunity and just to look and see so many children speaking at their highest potential. I think you all need to really, really take that into consideration, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Little. I am the Director of Student Affairs here at NCP. I am here to read a letter from one of our ANET partners, Ms. Lisa Scott, but I wanted to just share how NCP has poured into me. So we've heard about all we've done to pour into our teachers, and our community, and our students, but I just wanted to give a personal piece. So I'm from South Central Los Angeles, and I'm a first-generation college student, and so when I came to DC, I was excited for the opportunity of what charter schools bring. There aren't, there weren't a lot in LA at that time, so I was really excited that there was a California native that was here and wanted to make a difference in Southeast. And so when I first came to work here, I expressed to Ms. Ross, I talked to her a lot about my background and about being the first person to go to college. I really haven't seen much of the world. And when the students got an opportunity to go to Panama, Ms. Ross was the person to say to me, "I'll take care of it, you volunteer and you go." And just like the students came up and expressed how it was their first time seeing the world and using the passport, Ms. Ross gave that to me, and so did NCP. So I just want to speak to how we not only pour into the kids, but the adults are poured into, and I just wanted to share that piece. So the letter states, "To the District of Columbia Public Charter School Board, it is my pleasure to write a letter of support on behalf of National Collegiate Preparatory PCS as they seek to continue to provide a great education to the students of their school community. Over the past six years, the Achievement Network, ANET, has partnered with National Collegiate Prep to strengthen their school-wide practice and culture of using learning standards and achievement data to get breakthrough results for scholars in their school community. I have had the opportunity to directly support the National Collegiate Prep team for the last three school years. Throughout our partnership with National Collegiate Prep, we provide leadership coaching, professional development, and an integrated set of tools to assist National Collegiate Prep with implementing and utilizing a high-quality teaching and learning cycle. In our work alongside one another, we use the data from ANET's interim assessments in math and ELA, which are aligned to common core state standards, to help us design our instructional support and interventions. In addition, the data assists us in identifying and developing our professional development topics and sessions for teachers and leaders. The data is also supplemented with an instructional resource provided through our online platform. Over our six-year partnership with National Collegiate Prep, we have engaged in the following work to increase student achievement while building capacity in teachers and leaders: tailored professional development sessions, lesson planning alongside teachers providing real-time feedback, conduct classroom observation, providing teachers with targeted feedback and action steps, data analysis using student work and teacher-created assessments, ongoing curriculum internalization and analysis. Based on the work that we have engaged on over the past years, I have seen the following impacts: increase in student scoring proficient or advanced in math or park each year from 2015 to 2018; increase in student scoring proficient or advanced on park in ELA from 2016-2017 to 2017-2018; teachers internalizing the curriculum and using data to adapt their lessons to meet the varying needs and skill gaps that their students possess; teachers taking on leadership roles through the planning of professional learning sessions that modeled and taught teachers how to properly analyze data and use that analysis to modify their instruction, increase their knowledge and understanding of the aspects of rigor that math standards call for, and learn new strategies to implement in their instructional practice; teachers building individualized interventions for students based on their-
Ma'am, you need to wrap it up. It's been well over two minutes.
We'll have the full letter in the record if you can wrap it quickly.
Okay. The last paragraph states, "In my work with National Collegiate Prep team, I have seen their leadership demonstrate a strong desire and dedication to provide a high-quality education to the scholars who walk into their building daily. From providing teachers with targeted PD and instructional support, to their willingness to put systems and structures in place to deepen their understanding of the standards, plan for strong instruction, and reflect on data connected to instructional priorities. National Collegiate Prep consistently moves to ensure that they are doing what is in the best interest of the scholars who are entrusted to them on a daily basis. They will continue to do this through their regular implementation of instructional best practices, and they're utilizing all resources and partnerships that they are available, they have available to them. I look forward to continuing the work alongside National Collegiate Prep to provide the resources and support they need to provide their scholars with a great education through strong instruction grounded in best practices and a high teaching and learning cycle. Warmest regards, Lisa L. Scott, Senior Director of School Support, Achievement Network." Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Christopher Johnson, and I'm here to actually share a letter about one of our community partners, but instead of doing that, or before I do that, I think it's important that I give my personal experiences. I was actually raised in this neighborhood, right, 4196 Livingston Road. I came right on the street. Two older brothers. I'm very much aware of the environment of this area and what the young people, the challenges that they have, and many times, it's much more than academic. And because of that, we have to look at the puzzle more holistically instead of just in one way. As well as I came up in this particular area, I also went, I used to teach at PG County, but what I wanted to do was, I wanted to come back to Southeast because I knew that I owe it to this community because it was this community that gave me the ability, the opportunity to become a teacher. And so I need to give back to that community, and I know the needs of this community, and so therefore, I felt that it was very important. And while I have been here, I've seen the staff have been extremely passionate and caring for the students, and they give as much as they can give, and we're all trying to do our best to make sure that we give the students what they deserve over here in Southeast and Ward Eight. Thank you. Oh, the letter, I'm sorry. It says, "I am a concerned community partner." I'm writing because I want to see National Collegiate Preparatory High School remain open. NCP has played a critical role with helping students excel academically, maintain a healthy well-being, and overall broaden the rising for many inner-city youth. With NCP remaining open, this in turn will have a powerful impact on molding our future leaders to make positive changes in this world. National Collegiate Prep is unique and different from other schools in metropolitan area because it offers many activities and events for student and parent engagement. The annual Sancho football is one of the events that demonstrates student and parent engagement. I attended this event for the first time in February 2017, Sancho, which is a word from Ghana language that translates to "go back and get it." It's what students at NCP strive to do daily. For some students in the inner-city, Sancho football may be one of the only times she or he will attend an event such as this with their parents, with ladies, where dresses made by seamstress and young men wear tailored fitted tuxedos. I was so impressed because I have never attended such a well-organized educational event as the Sancho football, and look forward to attending many more. As a community partner, I have witnessed students in the inner-city and teachers working smarter instead of making it harder for students to transform from high school to work, roll of work, where students are engaging in a work-based, I'm sorry, work-based learning opportunities, internship, and free training programs offered in the vicinity of NCP, which in turn allows students to gain employment readiness skills. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you. Okay. And last but not least-
I'll be brief.
Thank you.
My name is Blaine James, and I teach mindfulness meditation, as well as world history here in National Collegiate. This is my seventh year of instruction at this school. I do have a letter, but I will just summarize it for you. I think it's more important, the message behind the letter. This letter is from the Vice President of Implementation for Achieve 3000, and for the parents in the building, or anybody who's not familiar with Achieve 3000. This is an online company that provides differentiated instruction for students. So basically, anytime we have students that come into our school below reading level, their Lexile reading score is not where they need to be, Achieve 3000 can convert the reading materials that we have, whether it be articles or what have you, or literature, into the appropriate reading level so that the students can pretty much access the information. It's a great tool, but they have sent a letter on behalf of Jim Costello essentially saying that they are recommending the renewal of the charter. I think really, it's more so what's behind the letter in that the reason why we need software like Achieve 3000 doesn't necessarily speak to the metrics that you guys go by to decide whether to renew a charter. You guys, I'm sure have a set of things that you look at, graduation rates, you mentioned re-enrollment rates, and other things that definitely can be an indicator to whether or not a school is being effective, but there are other things in terms of metrics that I don't believe you all are giving appropriate consideration. When we have kids that come into this building in the ninth grade, three, four, five, and six grades below reading level, where is the metrics that actually measures what kind of progress that student is making when they enter into the ninth grade and when they get to the 10th grade? If the metrics is there, we test for it, we grade it, and I know you have access to that data, but the real question is, why isn't that kind of metrics being heavily relied upon to show the school's effectiveness as opposed to the other things that you're looking at? That question has to be answered. Whatever you decide is whatever you decide, but with integrity and with fidelity, that needs to be addressed. We know this is a public charter school. We know we cannot turn any student away because it's a public charter school, so even though it's within the charter to do college preparedness, it has to be considered what we are getting from the very beginning and what kind of progress we're making with that student after a one-to-two-year process. I think our school has shown, from the seven years that I've been here, that students have gained some two and three grade levels over a period of time. I challenge any one of you to, because you wanted to ask the question before, let's talk about that question. Ask that question about whether or not students are making gains from the time they arrive here, based on what they have, and then check them a year later, see if those scores have improved. You'll find they've improved. A year after that, you'll find that their reading levels and math levels have improved. Ask that question, and if you consider that's not happening, then you have your argument, but I assure you, the data will show that those students are making gains.
Okay. Thank you so much. Really appreciate all the input. I think we're going to turn over next and talk a little bit more about the metrics, and both from PCSB perspective and the school's perspective. Okay, so we are now going to turn back over. Thanks again for all of the powerful testimony and input and insights from everyone this evening. We're now going to hear from National Collegiate Prep Leadership. Great. We'll leave it to you to provide the opening statement and continue on.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Heather Waddington, the newly-elected Board Chair for National Collegiate Prep. I counted it an honor and a privilege to have an opportunity to work with Ms. Jennifer Ross and to serve the National Collegiate Prep community in this capacity, largely because of my deep commitment of the youth that it serves and the dynamic mission of the school. Ms. Ross and I met five years ago when we both served on the DC Public Charter School Association Board together. We became close professional friends and colleagues because we were working together on similar missions, serving schools with high-at-risk schools east of the river. With that commonality, that bond, the need to come up with many creative ideas and thoughts for how to serve students and help them to be successful, we became close acquaintances that really began to share and think about sort of how we could serve our unique niche and really be successful. I've sat in this seat, an A seat, before the Public Charter School Board for many years now. I first sat here as the Chair of the Maya Angelou Public Charter School Board in 2011, making a request of this board, as I'm going to do tonight. I have been a Board Chair of Maya and for five years was the Chief Executive Officer and sat here asking for a number of things over time and know many of the staff and some of the board members well. With that, in 2013, when I took on the leadership of this Maya Angelou Schools as the Chief Executive Officer, shepherded the schools through a charter renewal process. It was our second charter. And then from there, shepherded the schools through a turnaround. And from there, shepherded the schools to a twenty-year charter review that was a successful continuance last year. I say all that to say that I know what it means to work in schools and to serve schools here in DC. I've done it and worked really hard with partners such as Ms. Ross in doing the work. It looks different. It's unique, and the challenges, I think, are often unknown to outsiders outside of the school and outside of the context. I think you've heard so much from the people here about the uniqueness of this school and what it means to the community, and I think that is deeply resonant because there are more things than just what you see. I think I bring a couple of things in addition to that experience, and I think that experience is incredibly relevant because part of why I chose to, with the Board's assent, take over as the Board Chair is to help lead the turnaround and some of the work that NCP needs to do to be successful. Have the experience to do it, and I think have the professional relationship to be able to do it and think that we can make the changes that the school very much needs with our partners, Blue Schools Network. I would also say that I think that during this time, we would want to ask the Public Charter School Board for additional time to be able to sort of meet the terms of a turnaround plan and be able to move the school forward and execute on those plans. As newly-elected Board Chair, there are three things that I think I fundamentally bring to the Board to offer you some confidence around what the work we can do in a short period of time. One is excellent governance. I think I have been Board Chair before, as I've mentioned, and have been governed by a Board, also been trained, brought on Board Development when I was at C Forever, and realized that the work that we are endeavoring to do, that's already underway at National Collegiate Prep, really requires a working Board that's working really closely and in tandem with school leadership to ultimately make the differences and the changes that needed. Schools have life cycles. Organizations have life cycles. Sometimes a Board can stand back and sort of allow management and things to flow, and other times Boards need to really be more engaged and more involved, and I think this is that time period. And I'm prepared to lead that and be deeply a part of that work. The second thing I bring is an acute focus on data and metrics. I am a quantitative researcher by training, believe in numbers, have sat before this Board in many cases asking for an alternative framework, which you now have, same with Ossi, asking for metrics that make sense for the student population that we serve here in DC, and really have advocated very heavily for the right metrics to look at to really be able to analyze kids. Certainly, NCP has a set of goals, and with some mixed results, we could produce certainly some stronger results, and I can attest to be willing to dig in, deal with that data, come up with stat processes, and work with some of the existing structures that I think NCP has and sort of building on that, but also working with the Board around our due diligence and what we need to know to effectively lead and steward the schools moving forward. The third and final piece is sort of a focus on academic performance, really making sure that we are academically moving the schools in the direction that it needs to go. We're certainly delighted to have Dr. Clifton here, who is a new leader of the school, and her expertise and her experience running other schools at the helm, as well as welcoming the new math department. So changes are already underway. We would want to be supportive of those changes and continuing to look at that, as well as looking at the staffing and the leadership of the school, as there have been changes there as well. So supporting those changes, both in academics, supporting in terms of leadership, and working with the team around many of the other dimensions in the plan that Blueprint has laid out. I would also say, and by way of closing, I am currently the President of a school that also serves high-need students in Philadelphia that is 170 years old. One of the powerful things, I think, that Gerard College has are alums that come back to the school frequently that owe their life to the school. And they remind me that as much as we can look at short-term things and look at data and as I endeavor to sort of change that school as well and the way in which we do our work, many alums have said to me, "This school saved my life." How do you measure that? And so I really want to put it before this Board in light of everything that you've heard, giving us more time to be able to show some of the short-term outcomes that we're looking at for long-term benefit for the school and the community. Thank you.
Thank you for this hearing and an opportunity to discuss National Collegiate Prep. I am Jennifer Ross, the founder and CEO of National Collegiate Prep. On June eighth, 2008, the Public Charter School Board gave me the responsibility and honor to bring an educational program toward eight that would allow children to be prepared and to attend college. It was an honor I did not take lightly and a privilege I am most grateful for. I would like to acknowledge what all of you already know. The PARC scores are unacceptable, and the graduation rate is troubling. None of this is what I want for our students, and I take full responsibility for it ends with me. As a school administrator, clinical therapist, businesswoman, aunt, godmother, and a champion for children, no one in this room is more disappointed than I am with our data. I acknowledge and respect that your staff, in particular Scott Pearson and Naomi DeVoe, demand solid education programs in DC. For the children deserve it, and the children in Ward Seven and Eight in particular do not need another failing program. I totally agree and understand and respect that they have a loss of faith in National Collegiate Prep. That being said, I'm thanking you for your undivided attention, and I'm asking that you take this evening to listen and to hear what we have done and what we plan to do moving forward. Again, I thank you for coming to our home. I understand where you are sitting. There have been a few times I've sat in your position. I've had a family and a student appealing a consequence given to them, hoping that National Prep has given them yet one more chance. I have many stories for when I made that decision to give a student another chance, and I've been proud every time. While my staff did not always like that I went against and allowed the child to remain a student, many times those students proved that they were worth the risk, and they took the chance and became a changed child forever. My biggest regret was denying one child another chance. They forever struggled, and it's a decision I will always remember and regret. So the community of National Prep comes before you to ask you to continue the school and to give us an opportunity to make you proud that this is a well-performing school in the community, a school to be proud of in Ward Eight. Before we take questions, I'd like to speak about the actions we have proactively taken to address some of the most significant challenges we have faced, and the turnaround team will discuss steps moving forward. To answer Board Member Shelton's question during the December meeting of why did I wait? I'd like to discuss what I have done thus far. Last year in February 2018, I reflected that while I was seeing some change, I did not see our data move in a direction or the speed that I felt would show positive results. It was my belief that while my good-intentioned staff made changes that needed to occur, I knew we needed new teachers and we needed to change the focus of leadership. So teacher changes. In March and April of last year, I conducted all interviews of teacher positions that I wanted to change. I knew the math department needed to be replaced in order to create a change and movement. After conducting all first-round interviews, I discussed the candidates with the leadership team. The organizational chart. I discussed changing the organizational chart with my Board as I felt I needed to be more involved in day-to-day operations. Upon approval from the Board, I targeted a new position of Managing Director to oversee the school and report to me instead of the position of CAO. I created leadership positions that would address specific needs of where our school was struggling. These positions include Director of Curriculum Instruction and Compliance. This position allows for a concentration of data to drill down and truly understand where we were failing. It took a closer, this position takes a closer look at how to help our children improve their score and how to increase our graduation rate and improve our PMF scores. While we would have demonstrated growth over a two-year period on the PMF, we were not accurately keeping up with the changes of the weights and floors of the PMF. Thus, we continued to show a decrease. This position works directly with our data manager and allows for us to make adjustments so that we are seeing an improvement. I also developed a new position of Director of Student Affairs. This position oversees the improvement of compliance with special education, as well as student attendance and re-enrollment. Thus far, we have seen gains in our attendance this year by 3%, putting us in an average of 90s instead of 80s from last year. With the addition of these positions, we are seeing where our focus is working and how we can improve more accurately. Our Managing Director has experience in teaching and learning. She has trained teachers locally, nationally, and internationally. While we did make gains in our QSR last year, I knew we needed to further drill down on training in the Charlotte Danielson model. So we hired a trainer to train the entire faculty into three model sessions of the Charlotte Danielson. We are now increasing our instructional walks and providing increased feedback and improved evaluations for second semester to ensure improved instruction. That will be further discussed with the restructuring. I have also instructed the leadership team to build an intervention program to assist our ninth graders to achieve success, get more support academically after school in order to improve our on-track scores and decrease the amount of students needing summer school. However, students that attend summer school will now be able to sign up for Summer Youth Employment Program and be paid and to earn while they learn. This is an important factor for our students as many need to work to support their families during the summer, thus missing out on their education. We have added a class for our 10th-grade students with UDC to improve math skills and computer keyboarding. We believe this class will increase our PARC three- Well, as well as, we will consult with the Marcus firm to support increased Board training. Finally, I asked the Board to engage with Blueprint, as stated in December, to come to evaluate our program and help build a strategic plan that will assure demonstrated improvement. I thank you for the opportunity to present. I ask you again for the opportunity to show you that we can make you proud of National Collegiate Prep. And I will now move to the turnaround team. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. I'm Matt Spengler. I'm the Founder and Executive Director of Blueprint Schools Network. I'm here this evening because Blueprint was invited by the NCP Board during this pivotal time to provide an external and critical lens on the school and, as Ms. Ross said, help craft a strategic plan that we believe will rapidly improve student and school performance. So tonight, I'd like to share first a little bit about my own background, provide a brief overview of Blueprint Schools Network, and discuss a few of the findings and turn-on action steps from our recent three-day visit that are included in the port that you have in hand. So first, before founding Blueprint, I was a high school English teacher in South Central Los Angeles. I was the founding principal of a small autonomous high school in Oakland, California. I served as a CAO of a multi-state charter school network. And before Blueprint, was a Program Director at Harvard University's Education Innovation Lab, where at the time, we were studying what separates high-performing charter schools from the rest of the pack in New York City. And I share this with you because I know firsthand about the challenges of operating a small, independent school, high school in particular, and about the imperative that we heard tonight for creating high-quality seats in schools and communities where there are not enough of them to go around. So this is the reason I founded Blueprint Schools Network about nine years ago, which is to promote educational equity and improve the life outcomes for students. We're a nonprofit organization. We're based in Boston, Massachusetts, and over the past almost decade have served more than 20 schools as a turnaround partner in Colorado and throughout Massachusetts. At its core, what we do is we work with schools to plan, implement, and monitor, really five common elements that we see in high-performing charter schools. And regarding the results of our turnaround work, I am proud of our nine-year track record and be happy to share with you our recent five-year independent evaluation on our turnaround work in Boston that was funded through the CNCS Social Innovation Fund Initiative, and also would be helping to provide any detailed student performance metrics that we've achieved over the last nine years. So turning now to National Collegiate Prep, really our initial work that we just began is right in line with how we typically begin school turnaround partnerships. Last week, a colleague and I, who is also a turnaround school- Last week, a colleague and I, who is also a turnaround school principal, spent three days at the school. We observed every single classroom. We held focus groups with students, teachers, and administrators, many of whom you heard from tonight. We facilitated planning meetings where we presented our initial findings and trends that we saw from our visits to the classrooms and to school leadership and began to outline the report and the plan that you have in front of you tonight. So before addressing the Blueprint report and some of the details in it, I would like to acknowledge, I think, what many, many people have spoken about tonight, which is that the school is clearly, at this point, not where anyone would want it to be, and that there was a true need for some significant and urgent changes. That said, what gives me personal confidence as an external turnaround partner is that we did find a school where, as you heard from tonight, there is an abundance of committed and mission-driven adults, parents, and students, and a strong core of veteran teaching staff here in place. One of the things that really stood out from the visit is when we spoke with about 18 students as part of the focus group, we asked them, is there an adult at this school whom you can go to for academic or personal support? And without hesitation, every single hand shot up, and they began telling stories, some of which you heard tonight. That is, in my experience of doing this across many, many schools, unusual, and it's something that I think denotes something different and has a ton of potential here at the school. I also think it has a lot to do with the resiliency research that we see about having an adult in someone's life who that person can go to over time when you have life shocks and many, again, of the other challenges that we've heard tonight. And so you'll see, as you'll see in the report, and I know you just received it recently, really, I think, one of the main themes and takeaways is that there is a true need, again, that we've heard from before, to focus on initially instructional practice and instructional quality at the school. And there is already a baseline of positive adult and student relationships from which to leverage for increased and rapid growth in learning. Specifically, we identified and targeted a couple of steps for immediate action between now and the end of the year. What was clearly needed, and I think was resonated, and when we debriefed with the leadership team, they said, yes, this is in line with what we've seen and understand, is to focus on observation feedback systems for teachers. Second, focus on a tighter instructional practice for professional development. There was a need that we heard and saw for adjusting the daily schedule to maximize the use of learning time and increase more opportunities for direct student interventions. And finally, resetting communication structures that can align with this school-wide instructional focus. So my expectation is that Blueprint will be active partners in this work. We would provide weekly coaching and technical assistance and conduct at least two more formal site visits during the next four months to both monitor progress and refine the plan as needed. Some of the specific action steps, not all-inclusive, but that you'll see in our proposal, that are in line for the next few months, priority, would be to, that Blueprint, from Blueprint's role, that we would be walking alongside NCP board leadership and leadership at the school to assess current staff and administrators. We would analyze and monitor programs to keep ninth-grade students on track. We would recommend teacher professional development sessions and instructional practice focus based on classroom observations and walkthroughs. We would co-create teacher observation and feedback systems and monitor the implementation of those systems. We would revise and monitor the teacher hiring process, again, if given the opportunity to continue on next year, and would advise on and review procedures and practices for course schedules and transcripts. And finally, as mentioned before, we would collaborate to really take a close look at the master schedule to see what redesign would be most appropriate for students' staff for next year. So in closing, I'd like to share that, again, I know from personal experience how hard it is to turn around a school and the magnitude of challenge that lies ahead for NCP and for Blueprint. That said, I also know it can be done. So Blueprint and I, and certainly the adults and students that you heard from tonight, I believe, share a common mission, and we, as an organization, are committed to making a positive impact for all students and families, if given an opportunity to do so. So thank you for allowing me to be here in person to address the board directly, and be happy to answer any questions you have about the visit, reports, or strategic plan, and what lies ahead at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Marcus. Together with my colleague Sherri Ingram, we are counsel to National Collegiate Prep. You should have the legal memorandum that we submitted yesterday, which lays out our legal arguments, as well as our response to the staff report recommending revocation, and hopefully you've got the turnaround plan, which we submitted earlier today. I'm not going to repeat the legal arguments in full, but just briefly. The legal arguments are, first, that the School Reform Act creates a strong presumption that, in the case as here, of charter review, that only in an extreme set of circumstances should the PCSB revoke the charter. It's very different than in a situation of charter renewal, where if the board determines that the school hasn't met its goals or has not complied with the law, it must not renew. In the situation involving a charter review, the presumption is the charter will continue absent, we would argue, extreme circumstances. Second argument, there's a lot in the staff's report about the PMF, but it's important to keep in mind that this board cannot revoke NCP's charter based on how the school has scored in the PMF. And the reason for that is that this school did not adopt the PMF as the statement of its goals. Third, in looking at the goals, NCP made, of the nine goals that were measured by the board, by the staff, excuse me, NCP, we argue, met eight of those goals. There's a disagreement between us and staff about one of those goals. You'll see in our memorandum why we think we, in fact, met or substantially met eight of the nine goals. And for that reason as well, the charter are not to be revoked. And our fourth point legally is that we've raised some fundamental concerns about the validity of the PARC score for math on which staff wants to revoke the charter. The School Reform Act requires that statewide assessments be valid and reliable and unbiased. And there's a lot of literature that's emerging about the PARC scores, and we'd like actually to submit into the record, and we can do it tonight, some articles for the board's review that address the issue of why the PARC is not, in fact, valid. Most recently, and there was an article, actually, that appeared this week in Education Week that you may have seen, that says, as of this week, New Mexico has, quote, "joined a long list of states that have abandoned the PARC test." And the article goes on to say that in a year's time, the only states using the PARC will likely be DC and Illinois. Now, I think we can agree on one thing. DC is the gold standard for charter schools. That should include having assessments that are valid and reliable and unbiased. I would urge the charter board, in thinking about this case, to think more broadly in terms of policy and expectations about having a measure for assessment that this board can defend as valid, reliable, and unbiased. And I would respectfully submit that the PARC assessment is not. So for those reasons alone, we would argue that this board ought to continue the charter. But in addition, we've submitted a turnaround plan, and we think the turnaround plan answers the staff's concerns about the school's performance. What we've done is we've tried to identify every concern raised by staff in its report and said, we acknowledge that there are grounds and reasons for improvement, and here's our proposal to deal with it. Ms. Ross has talked about the turnaround that's been underway already, but in addition, we've substantially elaborated on those turnaround strategies in numerous ways outlined in the memo we submitted. And I would say the two fundamental drivers of that strategy are, first, Dr. Watthington, and, second, Blueprint. Dr. Watthington is a recognized veteran in the DC charter school community who has graciously agreed to step up to the very serious responsibility of leading this school through a turnaround. As to Blueprint, they're new to DC, but I would encourage you to look at their website, to ask questions concerning the work that they've done, because they've demonstrated their ability, particularly with respect to math, to turnaround schools, including in Boston and in Denver. So we think, to the extent that the charter board has concerns about performance, we've provided a turnaround plan that is designed to address them. With Dr. Watthington at the lead and in partnership with Blueprint, the board can have confidence that we can address NCP's performance issues so to continue to provide the essential role that it provides to the Ward Aide community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that complete?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, super. Well, thank you so much for the input. Before we go on to questions, we are going to now hear from Nikhil Vashi, again, our specialist on DC PCSB's School Quality and Accountability Team.
Good evening. Again, my name is Nikhil Vashi. I am a School Quality and Accountability Specialist with DC PCSB. I'm just going to give a brief presentation explaining the reasons why staff recommended revoking National Collegiate's charter, starting with an explanation of how we evaluated National Collegiate's goals. Next slide, please. The school committed to meeting 10 charter goals. The school fully met three goals, substantially met one, only partially met three, and did not meet one goal. One goal could not be assessed, and one goal was removed from the analysis for reasons I'll explain later in the presentation. Next, please. I want to start with the goals that the school fully and substantially met. The school met three goals by demonstrating that it is financially viable, has hired staff with all the required qualifications, and has earned at least 12% of the points on the college readiness indicator of the PMF. The school substantially met an additional goal by maintaining and enforcing its fiscal and organizational policies. Next, please. These are the goals that the school only partially met. English language proficiency, maintaining a low suspension rate, and ensuring that families are not unsatisfied with the school and withdrawing their children from the school. As shown in the following slides, two of these three goals were partially met based on the early years of the review period. Next, please. This graph shows the percent of students in National Collegiate that are proficient in English on the PARC exam compared to the state average. National Collegiate is in blue, and the state is there in orange. While the school partially met its goal, in three out of the five years, the school was below the state average in both approaching and college and career-ready on the PARC. The second partially met goal is about student and parent support for the school. This graph shows the percent of students who left the school in the summer. The school's goal was that less than 15% of students would leave over the summer. And while it met that in the first two years of the review period, in recent years, more than that are leaving. We are concerned that students who leave aren't enrolling in any other high school and therefore ending their education when they leave during the summer of National Collegiate. Next, please. The third partially met school, met goal was for the school to have a low suspension rate. While in the last year, the school showed a very low suspension rate, for the previous two years, the school had one of the highest suspension rates in the charter sector. Next, please. Those were the partially met goals. Now, I want to discuss the goal that the school did not meet. This critical goal states that students will demonstrate proficiency and/or content mastery The school agreed that this goal will be measured in the exact same way that they were measured at their five-year review. At their five-year review, they were measured on three points. The state assessment proficiency in math compared to the state average, the average growth made by students in the school, and evidence from classroom observations. And those were the exact same factors we used for judging the school's attainment on this call for this review. Like the English slide before, this graph shows the percent of students who are proficient in math for National Collegiate as compared to the state average. Again, National Collegiate is in blue, and the state average is in orange. Over the last five years, the school was below the state average every single year and has seen a steep decline in math proficiency rates over the last three years. We also compared at-risk students in National Collegiate to at-risk students statewide. This graph shows a comparison between at-risk students in the school, in blue, and the state average, in orange. In the last two years, national, at-risk students in National Collegiate have been performing much worse than their peers in other schools. Not only that, but in the last three years, no at-risk student at National Collegiate was considered college and career-ready in math on the PARC exam. For the growth measure, National Collegiate asked us to consider NWA MAP data. However, when we received that data, the majority of students in the school did not have a score on this test. Whether this is because students didn't take the test or the scores were invalidated for random guessing, we cannot use such a small sample of test results to show growth for the entire school. Between the growth results, the proficiency results, and our observations of the school, which were only 50% proficient, we found that goal to be not met. Finally, there were two goals that were not assessed as part of this analysis. The first goal was a science goal, and it was based on an assessment that the state did not administer over the last five years. So it could not be assessed to no fault of the school. The second goal, around teacher satisfaction, was based on business rules that we found originally that the goal was not met. However, the school strongly argued about those business rules. As a courtesy, we will not be using that goal in today's analysis. Because the school did not fully meet its goals, the board has discretion to revoke the school's charter. Staff strongly recommends that the school exercise this discretion to revoke the school's charter and charter, and I'm going to give the reasons why we believe that it should exercise its discretion in this manner. Our first concern is the school's low graduation rates. This graph shows the four-year and five-year graduation rates of National Collegiate compared to the state average. National Collegiate is in blue, and the state average is in orange. National Collegiate has graduation rates that are much lower than the state average. We recognize that not all students could graduate in five years, but even adjusted in four years, but even adjusted for five-year rates, the school is well below the state. Our concern is amplified by the fact that graduation rates are far below other charter high schools that serve a high at-risk population. In fact, National Collegiate has the lowest graduation rates of any charter high school which has a high at-risk population. Next, please. Our next concern is-
Excuse me. I heard from the audience that they wanted a definition of at-risk. Can you go back to the previous slide? So a student is defined by the District of Columbia as being at-risk if that student's family receives public assistance, if that student is homeless, if that student is involved in the foster system, or if that student is more than a year or a year or more behind in high school. And across the city, about half of the students in public schools are defined as at-risk. But at National Collegiate Prep, that percentage is higher. It's above 65%. And what we show on this graph for two years is we show all of the high schools that have at-risk percentages above 65%, including several east of the river, and compare National Collegiate Prep's graduation rate, which is on the left in blue, with the graduation rates of the other four schools for two years. Idea is-
Excuse me. This is actually talking about graduation rate, not park. This is the four- and five-year graduation rates for schools. IDEA is a standalone high school. Park Chavez, two schools, begin as sixth grade, not in pre-K. Can I finish? And Friendship is- Let's keep the tone civil, please.
So the light blue is four years, and the dark blue is five. So for example, in 2017, 18, 58.5% of National Collegiate students graduated in four years, and another 5%, bringing it up to 63.6% graduated in five years. And if a student leaves National Collegiate and enrolls somewhere else, they're taken out of this calculation. So when we see 35% not graduating, that didn't mean they left here and went somewhere else. That meant that they dropped out. And that's very troubling to us.
What the issue is, is paperwork with regards to National Collegiate Prep. It does not mean that the students that left that were not appropriately recorded were dropouts. Every student, every high school student, every senior at National Collegiate Prep that started in August and stayed with us through June, graduated on time over our four-year graduating period, except for two students. Our issue has been that we need to clean up, making sure we know where the child left, went to when they left us. That is not proper recording, and I take responsibility for that, but it doesn't mean that all of those students dropped out. Also, we have the highest rate of at-risk students of all the high school charters. So that's not being reflected as well.
I would just say, as we will get to in a later slide, one of the other reasons that we are recommending that the Board exercise its discretion to revoke the school's charter is because the administration of the school has been chaotic, and the failure of the school to follow up with students who have left the school to ensure that they have enrolled somewhere else as opposed to dropping out is one example of that.
Like I said, I take responsibility, and we have made changes so that we can properly address the record-keeping. It has not been chaotic at National Collegiate Prep.
Okay.
All right. I appreciate all these questions, but the Board will have an opportunity to question both us and the-
That's right.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the school going forward. I would just like to complete the full list of reasons why we recommended closure, and then everyone will have a chance to discuss these reasons afterwards.
Thank you.
This will all be available on our website for you to look at. Yeah, it's on our website right now. Yeah.
Right there. DCPCSB.
Thank you. Yeah, next slide, please.
Sir, that's the purpose of this meeting this evening. No revocation decision has been made. The purpose tonight-
What's the purpose?
No, no decision has been made. The Board is voting next week. The purpose today is to get more information, for the Board to hear these important insights, the important actions that have been taken, and then for the Board to make a decision.
Without this, until this meeting is over, Mr. Pearson, you need to consider the words that you do. Because when you sit up there and call a staff chaotic, it's not as if you're in this community or you're in this school to see we live, we breathe, we keep. You know something? So my thing is that you haven't seen chaotic. You know, we started with like, we're looking at you, and you're saying, oh, y'all.
Okay. Ma'am.
When you've seen the change, when you've seen our children, those children that can be standing on the corner of seven bus, those students that can be wrong when you're at the bus stop, they're the same children that come into this building and be changed by a group of staff that you just called chaotic. But they're still a group of staff that love our children, up to this age. That was wrong.
Ma'am, with respect, I'm not saying they don't love your babies, but we saw the school year this year begin with students who didn't have schedules. So they didn't know where to go to class. And the state had to send experts in at the beginning of the year to help the school. No, it's- All right.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you so much for the input. I'd like to suggest that we continue on and get the presentation done so that the Board can also ask questions of both the school-
Yeah, I can.
Okay, if we could-
Yes.
Thank you for the input. Let's continue on.
And I just want to verify that the data presented here is data that's provided to us by the State Office of the State Superintendent, and it's validated by every school before we receive it. Thank you. Next slide, please. Another concern that we have with the school is low attendance rates in the schools, and we recognize that at-risk students face challenges attending school that are unique. But even compared to other charter high schools with high at-risk populations, National Collegiate has a lower attendance rate than average. Thank you. Next slide, please. We are concerned that many families choose not to re-enroll in this school year after year.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I appreciate that a lot. Our next concern is that many families choose not to re-enroll in this school year after year. This chart shows students at National Collegiate, the percent of students who choose to return year after year compared to other schools that have high at-risk populations. As you can see, National Collegiate, which is in blue, has the lowest re-enrollment rate of any of these schools, indicating to us that parents and students are dissatisfied with the school at a higher rate than these other schools. I'd also like to note that students who move out of state or have extenuating circumstances which prevent them from re-enrolling are not included in this rate. We have three major issues with the school's IB program. The first is that zero diplomas have been awarded by the school's IB program. The second is low test passage rates for students taking IB tests. And as discussed before, although there is IB exposure in the school, not many students are enrolling in a full IB program that would even allow them to earn a diploma if they were to pass some tests. Now, we are also concerned that the school has scored Tier 3 on the BMF, the lowest tier, which indicates very poor performance on many important measures. Now, in cases where we have already determined that a school has not met its goals, steady Tier 3 performance means that we as staff generally recommend closure because steady Tier 3 performance for that long indicates poor performance for a very long time. This graph shows National Collegiate's BMF performance as compared to the average BMF score for high schools with high at-risk populations. High schools with high at-risk populations have seen year-to-year improvement in their BMF scores over the last three years, while National Collegiate has declined every single The Charter Board conducts quality site reviews conducted by trained staff to observe instruction in schools. At the latest quality site review, our staff observed that 50% of the instructions that they observed were unsatisfactory. They cited issues such as students doing activities that lacked an evident instructional purpose or instruction that was rooted neither in DC standards nor college preparatory Our final concern, which Scott mentioned earlier, is with school operations and missing schedules and inaccurate transcripts for students. The Office of the State Superintendent shared concerns with us in August of 2018 that the school had failed to create accurate student schedules for students for the 2018-19 school year. After we did an audit, we found that there were 75 students that had transcript or schedule issues, and this is particularly concerning for a high school like National Collegiate. That's because high school students are working towards graduation and their diploma. If they start the year with scheduling issues or transcript issues, that could affect their chance at graduating on time. And so that is why this is a serious issue for us. And that is the end of my presentation. I would just like to close by thanking everyone for coming out today, and I will now turn it back to the Board.
May I make a comment? While there are concerns that I said that we need to address, none of the last few statements you've made have anything to do with the agreement that National Collegiate Prep made with the city with regard to our goals. I will further assert that while we had issues with our transcripts, in every review for National Collegiate Prep, every ninth-grade audit and every 12th-grade audit, we have never failed it, and all of our students have graduated appropriately. You all will not sign diplomas unless we have done what we were supposed to do to make sure that the students were in the appropriate classes. So while we had a transcript issue with regards to our schedule, that has been addressed. You can come anytime and look at our transcripts for second semester, but we have never mishandled student credits, nor have we ever had a situation where a student- student credits, nor have we ever had a situation where a student was not ready to graduate on time with the appropriate credits. That's never happened.
Okay. Thank you, Nikhil, for the review. I'm now going to open the floor to questions from our board, and also welcome Director Naomi Ruben DeVoe to join Nikhil to respond to our questions. So let me start and just open it up for any questions.
Thank you, everyone, for, everyone in the room here, for coming here, for all that you do, for the students, and for these presentations this evening. My question for this group here is, if student, whether mid-year or over the summer, if families are choosing not to re-enroll, what are you doing to find out where they are going? And where are they going?
Sorry. So we have, as we stated before, a highly transient community here in the Condon Terrace community. And so we know that it is not about student satisfaction or parent satisfaction. Many times, our students move between Maryland and DC because of affordable housing. And they also move because they have other opportunities for their parents out of the, out of the state. So they've not left us to go to another charter school in the area. What we found in the past two years was that we did have students leaving. And we found that they were leaving to go to Baloo because they were being told that they could go to get into their correct grade. What we then found out through investigations made by the city was that Baloo was inaccurately graduating students who had not attended high school and were not participating in classes appropriately, but were putting them in their correct grade. So while we are being compared to other charters, which is absolutely fine, I need us to keep in mind that we are the only charter school on this side of Ward 8. And the nearest high school to us is Baloo. When you look at our scores compared to Baloo, we quadruple in our scores with comparison to what they're, what they are achieving. What we have found is that if our students do not move out of the area, and if they have attended other school, another school in the area, it has been Baloo and not other charter schools.
Can I just correct the record that in the withdrawal metrics that you saw, students that move out of state are not included. So all of those students that left or did not return to the school are students who chose to either go to other schools in DC or not to go to school at all.
How do you know if they moved out of state if you don't have the record?
Because, because you provide us with the documentations. If they've moved out of state, or OSI does, OSI will give us the data if they're in other schools in DC.
But we're stating that you are inaccurately recording that we, our students are on the dropout rate. So if you're saying that they're dropout, that's saying that you don't have a record of where they are.
And that's correct, that they're either, but they're not out of state.
So how do you know they're not going out of state?
Naomi, is there an opportunity, if there is corrected data to be sent, can that be sent?
We absolutely can send it. And we tried to send it, and we were denied being able to send it.
Okay. Naomi, is there some follow-up to that?
I am absolutely unaware of the school trying to send us data that we did not accept. We have accepted every bit of data that the school has submitted to us or asked us to consider in this review.
Yes.
Secondly, all of the data and all the review have been validated by the schools. Our re-enrollment rate is part of our PMF that the school validates and tells us. And if there were students who were out of state, the school could prove we're out of state, they would have been removed from the measure. The school was unable to provide us with that data, and whether that's because they were unable to follow up with the students, or whether because, for whatever reason, we wouldn't have that access, it's up to the school.
Okay.
At this point in time, those dates have been, those rates have been validated in our public, on our website, and with an OSI too.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Naomi, is there, is there, is there anything to know about the homeless population in the data? Anything to add on that point?
Addiction records would be the only thing, and those are not allowed.
And then I have a number of questions after that.
I don't think there's anything to add on that the at-risk data includes students who are homeless and have other issues that may not, that we want to include. So we focus on at-risk altogether. We also don't want to identify any students.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So I want to, I have a number of questions, and then I know others do as well. And Rick, I know you're on the phone and may have some questions, too. This whole hearing has like, has my mind spinning about a lot of different questions, right? So I want to focus in on a few. The first one is around the math department. I've, I heard this evening that it sounds like there have been a number of changes to the math department. I'd like to know a little bit more about what has happened, changed for the student experience in math right this year compared to previous years that gives us any hope for improvement in math. And then I would also like to hear from, on the turnaround side, your observations around math and recommendations that you're making around math specifically right now.
So yes, we observed, one, we, I had an administrator go to be trained for Charlotte Danielson, not this past summer, the previous summer, to come back. And these administrators came back and trained our teachers. And then we began instructional walks. And what we found, and through reading the Public Charter School Board's QSR report, we found that our math department was ineffective. By looking at the rubric for the Charlotte Danielson, we found concern. And so, and it is evident in our PARC scores. And so we did change faculty, and they were part of the positions that I interviewed for, for us to generate a new math department. We find that our new teachers are more effective, and we think that they are definitely appropriate to help us move our math scores forward.
So what specific actions are you seeing in the classroom that's different with these teachers?
I would say that they are more into, in line with the Charlotte Danielson. They're following the rubric. They're following their lesson plans. While it's, no classroom is perfect, I'm seeing better instruction and the children, and we're paying more attention to our 10th grade cohort in adding, like I said, the UDC program. So that part of our problem, what we found, was that our children, one of the years that they dramatically dropped, our PARC scores, so when we were in our fifth year, we were taking DC CAS, which also demonstrated growth. We dramatically dropped when the test changed to PARC. We also dramatically dropped when we weren't allowed, for two years, we were using paper, and then we went to keyboarding. And our children weren't properly prepared and able to handle the keyboarding. So we are taking drastic and dramatic measures to try to help them be more confident in the keyboarding, and some of that is done in math as well. So we are continuing to evaluate this program, but we're seeing, we feel, the leadership at the school feels that we're seeing improved instruction in math.
Do you have any data indicators yet to show any growth in math?
We have not finalized our data indicators, no.
Okay. And from a turnaround perspective, what were your observations and recommendations around math?
No, thank you. First, just a little bit about our classroom observations, right? So we're trying to cover the whole school in, in three days. So typically, we will go into a classroom for about 15 minutes and look for evidence of planning, look for, you know, teacher-student talk, look for what level of instruction or what the students are actually doing. When, so we may not see the full lesson, but knowing that when we walked in, you know, we do see evidence of learning targets, we see evidence of do-now, exit tickets, some of the things you'd like to see in a structured lesson. But frankly, like, like, I think we wrote about, there was a variance. You have some new teachers, some of whom do a great job, some of whom need more, more support, you have some veteran teachers who are doing well, but then you see other classrooms that have classroom management challenges. So I think what we, it is not atypical, in my experience, for what we saw in these snapshots, which I think in conversations with leadership said that they were, you know, fairly, you know, in line with, with what they, they may see overall. In terms of plans for math, it's, you know, we, we talked about it, we talked about it a lot within our own network. We know it's a gatekeeper for all sorts of post-secondary opportunities. STEM fields are growing. We know that this is one of the things, as a former high school English teacher, seeing students that I used to have get held back or not being able to proceed because of math proficiency. One, and we've talked about this again, there, we have our next semester action steps that are really about instruction, planning, alignment, focus. But if we were able to continue on for the following year as part of Blueprints, what we would expect is to implement our Math Fellows program. We run a, an AmeriCorps math tutoring program where we bring in full-time tutors into the classroom to do small group differentiated instruction in addition to their core class, classes. This is something we've talked about, and it's something as, this would be something that we would, as part of our model. It's, I think, one reason why we've seen significant growth in math achievement at our other partner schools. It also becomes a teacher pipeline by bringing new folks who are thinking about education, they're AmeriCorps, they're mission-oriented. We believe that we would be able to find a number of people who would want to work here in Ward 8 to serve the students. There's no shortage of faculty who want to do so.
Ricardo, can I just ask one follow-up about? We heard during the public testimony, a letter from the Achievement Network Coordinator who works, who serves the school. So the school uses the Achievement Network. If that's the case, they do interim assessments, I think every five or six weeks. So does the school have Anet data from the first half of the year that can indicate to us whether or not there has been progress in math?
Good evening. My name is Alicia Wald, and I am the Director of Curriculum and Compliance here at NCP. To answer your question, yes, we did have assessment for A1 for Achievement Network. We are in the process of going through A2 as we speak. We did see that our 10th graders PARC exceeded maybe 1% or 2% of the network for our A1 scores in ELA. They did not quite do that for the geometry. And in our 9th graders, we saw that they lagged behind the actual charter. So we do have data for A1, but not for current A2. We will have that currently. We have our data meetings with Lisa next week, once we get through our quarter-two exams. So we will be able to follow up with additional data.
Thank you.
So my second question turns it actually over to English, another key area of concern in terms of what, what is being done this year around English, and what are you seeing from a turnaround perspective for English language? Yep, it's essentially the same quest, yep, essentially the same question around math that I had, but now let's turn the, the focus to English. What are, what is the approach on English this year in the school? What is changing for the student experience in English? And what, what is being recommended from a turnaround perspective?
So I'll speak about what we're doing for the English. Right now, we are working with OSI with additional supports. We're writing across the content that we have identified different strategies that our students will be involved with across the school, across the curriculum, to make sure that they're getting exposure to writing and reading strategies that they can push down to other classrooms, so it's not just in ELA. Because they have to be able to be literate in all of their classes, not just ELA, for the rest of the world, for the rest of their lives. And so that's what we're focusing on now as far as the ELA. My students do outperform a lot times, a lot of the times, in ELA. So we realized that we have an opportunity to drill down on literacy as it relates to math, and those are some additional things that Blueprint will talk about.
I, you know, I think we saw a similar variance of instruction that we saw in math, that we saw in science. And I think the strategies that we've outlined, both for the next six months, really do focus in on instructional moves and instructional practice that really span across all, all subject matters, right? This is, what is the focus for the school? What are we all going to get better at? If it's checks for understanding, if it's lesson planning, if we're all going to, like, selecting and then following through and aligning classroom observation, professional development, data, and feedback. And then Blueprint's role is to both provide supports for that and templates, but also to monitor it and actually ask students, teachers, and faculty, do we see change? Are we seeing it in the data? Are we seeing it in student product? Are we seeing an increase in student talk, an increase in critical thinking, an increase in activities that drive higher-level thinking? So it, again, there's no one intervention that's going to solve this, right? It is about doing five things well in conjunction. What we found is that a lot of schools will do one, two, or three strategies. They may have their leadership down, or they may do the instructional planning, or they may use time well, school culture, use of data, differentiated instruction. Our job is to work alongside the staff, filling in gaps where needed, providing technical assistance, but also making sure execution is solid on things we know work, right? And for being a high school principal and a high school teacher, when you have a thousand distractions and things to pull you in different ways, part of our role is to keep it focused and work with the school to build capacity and focus on those five things.
So in your previous turnaround experiences in Massachusetts and Colorado, how long did your relationship with the school typically last, and how did that evolve over time?
Yep. And we partnered with Denver Public Schools back in 2011, pretty much right after the research came out, and there we were, I was at Ed Lev's at the time, we were doing some work in Houston for the Apollo 20 program. So Denver, we worked with the district and schools to craft a five-year plan that incorporated all five elements, extending the time, bringing in math tutors, made many changes, both to the instructional day and year. And again, I could show you some, some results. Our first year in math, we had all, I think it was all seven of, of the schools that implemented the five strategies were in the top 11% statewide in terms of student math growth. Okay? We had the number three school, the number five school, both for elementary and middle school in math growth alone. In Boston, we executed a three-year contract. We worked with English High School, one of the, I think, the oldest public high school in America. And the, in our third year, they had the highest growth in math. And I think in ELA, in the state of Massachusetts, the growth was so high, they pulled the math scores because they thought something was wrong. They thought students could not do that and make that kind of growth. So that's the system, right, that we all are working in. So it's also about changing mindsets about what's possible. And again, it's, these are strategies and inputs that work when done well and executed well and followed through with it.
Thank you. That's certainly encouraging. I did, we have one other question around suspension rates. From the data, it looked like there's a dramatic decrease in suspension rates this year, and wanted to better understand what's happening there.
One of the things we found in our research was that over 70% of our suspensions were coming from our 9th and 10th graders. So what we did was we focused our behavior intervention programs, we focused our summer bridge, which is our entering 9th graders, and we really drilled down, as we all say, on how we can target the behaviors, more importantly, how we can begin developing the relationships earlier with the students, given that we know that our entering 9th graders not only perform academically two-and-a-half grade levels behind, but emotionally, the behaviors we see are commensurately two to three age, you know, years behind. So once we did that, we saw some changes. I think you saw that the most recent... I think you saw that the most recent school year, our suspension rate dropped to 3.3%. So we really have focused on how to address the 9th and 10th graders earlier on in the process.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions right now. I'll turn it over to Naomi.
So we received the turnaround plan earlier, late this afternoon. I'd like to spend more time with it before digging too deeply into questions related to that. I just want to know the availability of people on the turnaround team to answer questions. I'd like to make sure that we have a chance to truly dig into what's presented here. And is there any additional information that you all plan to share between now and the 22nd to ensure that we have everything in a timely fashion to walk through and really dig into to ask questions?
On the first point, absolutely, we're available to meet with you, to talk to you in person or by conference call. Understandably, you've only had a few hours to look at it, and it's really, we think for us tonight, the most important document, because it's the path forward. It's the path forward for this school. So we'd like to be available at your convenience to ask, answer any questions you might have. In terms of additional information, I mean, just check with the team. The only thing, I think I mentioned earlier, we've got some articles that deal with the validity of the park, which we'd like to submit. Excuse me? Okay. Yeah, but otherwise, no. We've submitted everything that we intend to submit. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board right now?
Thank you, Ricardo. I have a few questions about the turnaround plan. It did come in late, and so I haven't had a chance to read it as thoroughly as I'd like, but I do have a few. First is just the nature of your relationship with the school. Do you have a signed, do you have a signed, does Blueprint have a signed contract with the school at this point?
We executed a contract for this initial work and have one in place for future work if needed.
Because I don't believe that's been submitted into our contract system. We have not seen a contract.
It doesn't have to be.
Okay.
It's less than $25,000.
So the contract you have--
The initial contract is less than $25,000.
So the turnaround, the turnaround work is for less than $25,000. The evaluation.
No, the work, the evaluation, the report that you have was for less than $25,000. Going forward, it will be more expensive.
So you would enter into a contract?
Correct.
Now you, and Dr. Waddington, welcome back to DC. You live in Philadelphia, you run a large school in Philadelphia. How much of your time do you anticipate spending on the turnaround?
In Philadelphia, which is two-and-a-half hours away, but I'm in DC all the time. I'm back in DC on Saturday. So usually, I'm back and forth, while you're with me, about once a week. Just a variety of things. I'm still tied to the city. So I will be here to do what is needed to move this forward, without question.
And you talked about Blueprint having weekly coaching sessions. Are those coaching sessions in person, or are they done by phone?
Actually, in our other partnerships, we work with also a couple of rural school districts where travel is a little more challenging. So some would be in place, but we also want to be mindful of cost and travel expense. So we try to utilize video conferencing when possible. We have a technology called Swivel that allows us to actually look at instructional moves live or record what happens in the classroom for observation and feedback. We can co-observe observation and feedback lessons even from a distance. Not as good as being in person, but we feel the cost-benefit of some of the technologies we're using actually is worthwhile. Thank you.
And are there, in the contract that's anticipated for this coming school year, are there any Blueprint employees who will be permanently on the ground at the school?
No, that's not our model, to be honest. We believe that it's about capacity building. We want to work and then taper over time as the school demonstrates higher levels of performance. It is not always linear. And so one of the things we adjust from time to time is the number of monitoring site visits. We typically start out with six a year, but depending on school performance and what's happening, sometimes we move it up to eight, and sometimes we move it down to four, depending over time.
So you lay out five strategies that are going to be part of the turnaround, and the first one is to develop, to focus on teacher observation and feedback. And your report from your visit, I guess it's just this week or last, your report from your visit last week said that both veteran and new teachers reported insufficient observations and feedback to ensure consistent, effective instructional practices. New and veteran staff reported no more than one observation with feedback in the last year. The turnaround plan relies on the founder to meet with the administrative team to establish a weekly routine to schedule observations and feedback, develop a consistent rubric, and set expectations, and schedule blocks of time for that feedback. So that's on the team that's here at the school now. What will be Blueprint's role in implementing that very dramatic change from what's happening now at the school?
Yeah, we think that's essential. I mean, that's a thing a lot of research shows, that not only do teachers need and benefit from feedback, it's also connecting administration with what's happening in the classroom. And frankly, it's a retention tool that we've seen in other turnaround efforts where teachers want to be known, they want to feel like their practice is improving, and they want to be connected with other fellows in the building. My colleague, Ron Schumacher, who was with me also for three days, one of his roles would be gather materials. Do you have a system that you are currently using? If not, we have templates that then we would give to the school. And we say, okay, we've got to craft something where we would expect and set out expectations that you are in classrooms, or different administrators are in classrooms for sacred times of the day. Things always happen, but that can be uploaded. What we do with other schools, you upload it into a Google document, you can easily track over time when observations are happening, what notes were taken, and what feedback was given. Then Blueprint's role, in addition to the technical assistance for that, is we come back at our next monitoring site visit, we see access to live Google Docs, and then we also have more conversations with teachers and administrators, what's working, what's not, and make adjustments as needed.
Okay. And then your second element is to establish comprehensive communication system. And you write that what you observed last week was that all staff and many students shared concerns about the lack of clear and concise communication. This lack of predictable and consistent communication systems result in teacher and student behaviors that are not aligned with the expectations of school leadership. Again, the plan is that the founder will meet with the administrative team to establish a communication system that includes several elements, including developing a weekly newsletter that would be distributed across the school. What will Blueprint's role be in helping institute a radically new and different communication system at the school?
They plan, implement, and monitor. Okay, so that's what we do. We sit down, we have people who have done this, we have experienced principals, Ron, myself, other folks who work for organizations, and we say, again, let's look at the communication system. What's the daily information that's going out to faculty? What's the weekly newsletter look like? Okay, what do professional development meetings on Friday look like? What are the agendas? So part of it is planning and understanding what's currently happening, right? And then you begin to have discussions about what's needed. What we heard from the staff and students, that they wanted more information on a regular basis from leadership. And I think that's a fair thing to ask for, and I think leadership owned up to it as well. You know, this is a report that we were asked to provide very direct and candid feedback, and I think it frankly benefited from a staff that wanted to make the school better, but was also very candid about what was working and what was not.
And I won't go through all these, but I just, the third one, which is the other labeled Tier One, meaning most urgent, is professional development focus and systems. And you write that during your focus groups last week, teachers reported that there was very little staff development beyond what was referred to as staff meetings on Friday afternoons. Staff members reported that there were some loose understandings regarding the expectations of using a Danielson lesson plan, and classroom observations during the site visits showed inconsistent applications of this work. Classroom observations also demonstrated significant variances in instructional practices. Most teachers have large amounts of time with students, but instruction was not consistently engaging, and tasks were often below grade-level standards. Your plan for turnaround is that the founder will identify a professional development leader from the administrative team that will be responsible for planning whole-staff professional development and creating a professional development team consisting of appropriate administrators and several other steps. Again, this is a fundamental radical shift in how the school is supporting its teachers through professional development, being done by the existing administrative staff. How will Blueprint support and enable that critical change?
Well, it's similar in process to what we've talked about. Again, planning, implementing, and monitoring. It is taking a look also, though, at aligning the professional development agendas, planning, and looking at a consistent, you know, every week that this is the focus. We're not going to, you know, there's many things to cover at a school. But part of Blueprint's role is to work alongside the leadership with Ron, who'll be working most intensely with the school, who was here for three days and got to know, initially know, some of the folks. But he's got to gather information, materials, conversations, and planning, so that you have alignment amongst all these systems. But it is clear that work needs to be done. I think that the school has been very open and has taken ownership for that improvements need to be made.
And Ron lives where?
He lives in Denver, Colorado.
I see. So as you anticipate the contract that you would sign with the school, how many total hours do you expect to be in the contract for the work between now and the end of this school year? Not counting the work you've already done, but the work helping implement all these critical changes?
Well, I, you know, that is something that we have to figure out, to be frank. We were at the school Wednesday and Thursday and Friday of last week. Then we spent weekend time together with this team, and Monday and Tuesday, to craft and come up with a plan that we believe that we could stand here with confidence and say that it was going to work. So I would regard that as one of the next steps.
I see. And do you have a budget in mind for the work over the coming, the rest of the school year?
Typically, the way we work is we craft a scope, we work directly with the school, and then we budget off of that. So the budget would come from the scope of work.
But so no budget yet?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. I'm done with my questions.
Ricardo, could I ask a question?
Yes, great, Rick. Thank you.
Hi, this is Claire Cruz. Apologies for not being able to be there in person. I have one question, following on from what Scott was asking about with regard to alignment between the needs assessed and the plan. Could you say a few words more about the alignment between the plan around overall teacher support as articulated, and other elements of the overall plan, and the intersection with the concerns around the IB program, and some of what's laid out in terms of addressing some of the needs within the IB program? I just love to know how those two intersect in a more holistic way, especially across the next five or six months, the nature of the work through the balance of the year.
Well, you know, I think in the long run, what you want to see certainly here is to expand the number of students who are entering the program, right? You have 9th and 10th grade to really hone in on those instructional practices, and you can actually draw it down from an IB program and some of the outcomes and expectations of that program, and really begin to align it through what are some expectations for 9th and 10th grade. But I think, yep, so.
I just would like to add that a member of the turnaround team includes Laura Lane, who is the Management Specialist from the IBL World Atlantic Region, of whom we are a member of. So she is part of, the team could not be here today, and she's coming to evaluate the program, to help us assess the strategies for success, so that we increase our IB participation and make it more productive for the students in the program itself.
And will she be able to provide support and coaching in addition to assessing the program as it is and developing the strategy?
Yes, but also, we are going into, our teachers, our IB teachers are about to go into another recertification and additional training. So we have some new teachers in the IB program that will go into their initial training, and then we have veteran teachers who will go into the next stages of training, certification.
Now, I'll just add one thing, and one of the reasons why Ron Schumacher has joined this initiative is because he does have experience in IB in high school, from his own background.
Thank you.
All right. Any final questions?
I plan to come visit.
Great.
So to follow up, would love to talk to a handful of students. I would just ask the question that I asked in December, in terms of three years ago, when we saw the numbers trending in the way that they have been, why was this effort not pulled together sooner?
So again, I'll answer the same way I did in December. We have to be mindful of our fiscal responsibilities, and so we had leadership here that we did build a plan, so that we thought we were moving in an appropriate direction. And as I stated earlier, even with our partnerships, like with 100 Black Men and increasing our STEM program and all of that, while we saw some growth, we also saw that we were not being effective in looking at some of the data and how it was trending on the PMF, because we didn't realize that some of the weights in the floors were changing. Also, we had the park to deal with, which was different. While we worked with our students to improve their park scores, and we did see some improvement in math two years ago, what we also realized was that we really didn't address the need for the keyboarding that we thought we had. So that is why we saw some decreases as well, which we are addressing now. I feel that there was a change as far as where we were starting to address. Like I said, what I saw was that we weren't addressing the, we didn't see what the scores were doing to us as far as the PMF with the floors and the changes. If the floors had not changed, we would have demonstrated 10% growth. A model of what?
Is it possible before the 22nd to see a model of what the difference would have been?
Yes, we have that. We'll give that to you, we'll send that to you. Absolutely.
Okay, last call for any final questions? Okay, well then, I'll just say, you know, we clearly have a room full of people who love the students at National Collegiate Prep. Thank you all for being here tonight. If there are no more questions from the board, then we're going to adjourn for the evening. Thank you for coming out tonight, staying at this late hour, and we'll see you soon.